Alrighty, welcome. It is six o'clock. I call the February 7th City Commission meeting to order and we'll begin with the roll call. City Clerk?
Mayor Hassel.
Here.
Commissioner Reddy.
Yes.
Commissioner Butler.
Here.
Commissioner Motta.
Here.
Commissioner Morris.
Present.
Mayor, we have five Commissioners present. The quorum of three has been met.
Okay, please join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since it's the first meeting of the month, tonight is an opportunity for public comments for items that are not on the agenda for tonight. If the item you want to talk about is on the agenda, then you'll just have to wait till that comes up. So if anybody would like to speak about something, we will... How many... We have a list of people here. How many people are wanting to speak about things that aren't on the agenda tonight? Okay, that's fine. We will start with you guys and we'll go ahead and allot the usual five minutes. We will begin. Dano Jones? Nope. Dan?
He was just signing.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, Ron Snowberger, please come forward and state your name and your address or who you're with or why you're here.
My name is Ron Snowberger. Under my rise, I don't have to state my address.
Okay.
I'm here for specifically that point. There's a client of Pawnee here in town who was giving notice that basically they're stating that I live there and my dog is there full-time, which is not the case. Jill Jacoby knows this and there's nobody obviously over Jill Jacoby but you and God. So I'm going to point out some things here that are just blow me away. She has gotten... This particular girl, a client of Pawnee, has gotten this letter stating that she does not provide my personal information, my lot rent, my utilities, that she's going to get evicted from her home. And I'm like, you know, that's ridiculous. I'm not going to do it. And this girl lived in terror fear from her conditions for the next week until... And it's still not resolved. I'm putting it in your lap right now. You are the ones that will resolve this. Jill Jacoby during that time had called this girl and told her to go out in the yard and pick up dog crap. I just don't get it. She has told her she is not to provide meal, food, for lodgers, boarders, anything, just what I am doing. Okay? So right there, that is against. We stood up, said a pledge of allegiance to God. Where would Mary and Joseph have been born? According to Jill Jacoby, they've been born out the street. Now, this particular girl has helped me since the time of my accident three years ago. Three years ago, I was an employee of the city of Manhattan, okay? Whatever it said on the news didn't look good. I don't know what it said because I've been out of my mind for the past two years, recuperating, couldn't tell up from down. There is no help for me. I didn't have anything. I lost my home. I've sold all my possessions. That's the only income I've had. I'm still waiting on social security. So I hope tonight might shed some light on some of their decisions and speed them up. It's been 15 months since I last applied. So, I mean, it just goes on. There are discrepancies throughout this, but basically what the indecision was, she had been asking Jaria... No, I'm sorry, scratch that. She'd been asking this client to give her a handwritten letter stating that she did not want me on her property. And Jaria, "Why would I do that? I want him to hang out." She asked her if she wanted me on her lease. No, no one's asking for that kind of a change. I'm not living there. I just... It made no sense. So now, the indecision is, is I'm banned. I'm banned from visiting a private individual, cannot share meals with her, and basically she gave me a place to take a hot shower every day. Not every day because of my pain. I have nowhere. I have no home. I've lost everything in the past three years. City Manhattan, you know, I love J. David, but City Manhattan cut and run as soon as they seen the news. I didn't even get a goodbye, get well, nada. So here I am, three years later. I'm broke. I'm dirty because I can't bathe because of Jill Jacoby. My blood pressure's up, so I can't even go donate because of Jill Jacoby. And she's just tyrantly threatening this girl to take her home, who cannot mentally defend herself? That woman needs fired, and I'm telling you what, I'm calling you for some action. I want her fired. I want your system revamped, and I need some cash in my pocket because it's only going to get worse from here. I'm not afraid to bully the bully guys because I have nothing left to lose. Don't care. Like I said, my dad, I don't know how many of you sitting up there, my dad joined the war in 1942, served full-term. He was... There was a generation gap between me and my pop, but he went all the way through World War II. He was at Normandy. He was at Battle of the Bulge. I'm pissed. Somebody better do something and fix this. I'll see you at your next meeting, if not prior. Because it's all right here, white, all right here.
Thank you. Next on the list to speak, Gary, is it... Is your time?
Good evening, Commissioners and staff. My name is Gary Oles. I live at 3308 Frontier Circle. And as many will say, I'm a familiar face up here frequently. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. As you know, I've been up here numerous times, whether I'm talking about the makeup of the RCPD Board, whether I'm talking about property taxes, whether I'm talking about revenue-neutral issues or other issues. As according to the sheet that I've filled out, I'm here to talk about property taxes, which is going to be a very unpopular topic for some. Specifically, I'm talking about property tax exemptions. All of these folks up here, been in the past and in the future, alls we have is words, but we have no action. That's why we elect Commissioners. You're here to represent us as citizens first. You're here to represent the city second. They are not the same thing. I've spoken to other boards and will continue to speak. Specifically, I have a concern. I don't know the details of the Foundation's request for a 10-year abatement. You do. I don't know how well the public knows all the details of not only the proposed building, but the last two buildings. But the reality is, if this Commission and future Commissions, or County, or whoever has the ability, in this case, even the state of Kansas, continues to grant these tax exemptions and as the cursory information I have is like $3.65 million in tax exemption for the next 10 years. Man, that's generous. Somebody's paying for it. Me, all these folks are paying for it. There's a balance there, I realize, that you have to deal with in terms of economic development. You want it. Who doesn't want it? I understand that, but every one of you know, you're fully aware that 45% of all parcels in Riley County pay 100% of all the taxes. Excuse me, got that backwards. It's 55%. And 45 is tax exempt. That continues to grow. Al Langton's home was sold to Blument Church, tax exemption. The old theater on the west side was sold to another church, tax exemption. Hopefully, all of you are aware of House Bill 2036 that I believe Mike Dobson is a co-sponsor or co-author. It's going to... It proposes a tax exemption for certain classes of veterans and retired and disabled veterans. I think there's already a new law that gives an exemption to low income on property taxes. Folks, this is not sustainable. I realize that we're trying to draw people into Riley County, but the reality is, it's somewhat what my father told me years ago, which is a good 50-plus years ago. He said to me, and I don't know that it's true, he said, "You know why there's only one exit to Manhattan? Because originally, the interstate was supposed to come closer, but the leaders at that time said, 'We don't want the riffraff off the interstate.'" So that's why it's nine miles out. That may be lower, I don't know. And I'm sure there's other reasons for that. But that kept certain people away for a certain amount of time. These types of exemptions, whether it's light, art and light, whatever the case may be with the Foundation or other tax exemptions, you're creating a class of people that can only afford to live here. You all and the County and other taxing bodies or whatever, they contribute to the cost of living in Manhattan. It's not just the cost of living. You guys, you all affect that. Property taxes are crazy, and they're only going to get crazier if we continue to go from 45% exempt to 47% exempt, 49% exempt. It's just going to go crazy. How can you expect that? Now, the trade-off is, as I understand it, well, that creates jobs and people buy houses and houses are built, and that creates income for the city in property taxes in the long haul. But the problem is, in the short haul, all we folks get to pay for it, whether it's through rents or whether it's through direct payment of property taxes. My words are just words, and they absolutely mean nothing, but your actions can help and your inactions will hurt. Appreciate the time. Thank you.
All right. The next person I got on the list here is Jessica Malk. Are you here for...
For non-agenda?
Come on up.
Okay. Jessica Malk, 9617 Lake Shore Drive.
Pull the microphone a little closer to you. There you go. Thank you.
Jessica Malk, 9617 Lake Shore Drive. I usually watch your meetings online, so first time talking person. I appreciate your time and all you... All of that you do for this position. Mostly wanted to just make a comment about the Aggieville paid parking and kind of asking if you all would take a step back and look at the current feedback that we're getting right now. You might have seen the petition that's going around to help employees to get... To go back to free parking or have some sort of concession for our employees. I am the Business Office Manager for the Dusty Bookshelf and the Acme family of stores. We... Majority of our employees are students, part-time students. Their full-time job is going to school, so we're kind of seeing recurring themes coming through. So we have decrease in foot traffic, decrease in sales, decrease in job applicants. It's hard for us to see our, you know, an employee that works 10 to 15 hours a week paying for their parking pass. You know, some businesses can't afford it at this time. So our thought and a recurring theme is, can... Is there any way to get this back on and to talk about this again and have... Can we wait until after construction's done to institute paid parking? Just wanting to kind of give this feedback again and show that it is still relevant. There's a lot of people talking about it. I was at the 2016-17 Aggieville Vision meetings that were at the ice rink and kind of like that. And kind of looking back, kind of comparing to what we looked at then to what we're looking at now, even noting the numbers, like if we considered, there was 4,200 surveys done, Walker and Olson and all that. So 4,200 community members said, "This Aggieville Vision is great. This is wonderful." They gave all kinds of input and we went with it, and we're... Here's where we are today, and now we have 6,000 students... Not all students, 6,000 signatures on this petition. So I think it's kind of a signaling point of maybe we should stop and look at this and at least give everyone who's asking a chance to get through construction, hold off on paid parking. And that's the gist of it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next person who signed up was Catherine Huffman.
Hi, my name is Catherine Huffman. I live at 701 Highland Ridge Drive. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you all tonight. I think the greatest concern for every single person in this room is to make Manhattan and Aggieville the greatest place it could possibly be in every regard. We all want successful futures for our community, small businesses and employees. With regard to the businesses and employees, I would like to bring some concerns to your attention that are shared by the small businesses and employees in Aggieville. We understand that things must move forward and that innovation must take place. However, the recent construction and developments in and around Aggieville have not taken a great deal of input and consideration towards the people and places that make Aggieville what it is. The greatest pain felt by businesses, owners and their employees in the restriction of parking. Without any input from the people it directly affects, the city has moved to severely limit Aggieville parking to the parking garage. The main flows of traffic and businesses were shortly cut off and closed with a minuscule amount of notice. Businesses have tried to accommodate this sudden and drastic change, but the decision-makers for this process only answered with more strife and dissonance by requiring employees who work in Aggieville to pay for parking. When the businesses are struggling to pay rent, how can you expect them to pay their employees parking that in most cases is more than their rent? How can you expect students, the majority of Aggieville employees, to pay for parking? I cannot put it more simply than this. In today's economy, with all of its unpredictability, this is absolutely unsustainable. Any and all attempts to negotiate and voice our concerns before tonight have left us feeling unheard, underappreciated and ultimately oppositional. We want to work with the city and the business association to navigate these changes, but the general feeling is that we are working against the powers that be. Employees are the end-all, be-all success in Aggieville. Requiring employees to pay for parking without even a guarantee of a spot unless you want to pay exponentially more is tone-deaf and disappointing decision. At the very least, you could still support the businesses and employees who call Aggieville home by making this transition less of a financial burden. Each and every dismissal of this notion sends us the message that you simply do not care. In reviewing all of the decisions and development within the recent months, the perception of the majority of us who actually work in Aggieville is that the old is being raised to the ground to make way for something generic and modern. The planned commercial buildings stand in stark contrast to the smaller and more individual perspective that our businesses make in an absolute mission to carry out with our patrons. The restrictions of the parking, traffic flow and quite literally tearing sections of the district to the ground without any regard to the businesses sends one clear sentiment. We are not wanted anymore. We are not asking for all of the development to be halted or reversed. We know that that's simply not a reality. Innovation and rebranding can be a really positive thing, so this is us offering our concerns in a hope to be heard and valued. At the very least, we could be given more notice about these future plans and how we fit into them, as well as removing the nonsensical financial burden of paying for parking for businesses and employees who are already burdened by your decisions. Please hear us and listen. We want to work with you to keep Aggieville the amazing place that it is. We hope that we can see cooperation and that we are still valued as the lifeblood of Aggieville. We cannot function without us. Thank you.
The next person who signed up was Jordan Davis. Are you talking about non-agenda items?
Hello. As you said earlier, my name is Jordan Davis. I'm not going to give my address. I'm here representing Blue Stem Bistro. I'm pretty sure you guys are aware, we did start a petition a couple of months ago, which now is hand is over 7,000 votes for us to get free parking. Now, I'm going to keep this short and sweet and just to the point. I've been working in Aggieville since I was a freshman in college, and that started in 2018. I'm from Houston, Texas. I'm away from home, but I've been out here for six years, and the main reason because of that is because of all the great friends and all the great connections that I've had from working with all of these beautiful people that are here for me today. Now, I don't have much to say because I don't really like public speaking, so I'm just going to say this. I'm just asking that you guys can work with us. $25 or $40 a month added to my bills is a lot. I'm already broke and I'm already paying to live day by day. Now, I don't work in Aggieville because I'm bringing in, bank as I like to call it, pounds of money. I'm not doing that. I'm working there because I love the people who support us and I love to serve those people who come in there. Now, to make it harder for me to be able to go to work because I have to park inside of a parking garage where I'm paying just to be able to work where I'm making minimum wage, to me, it's just outrageous. Now, I'm not asking that you guys tear down the parking lot and just open back up the streets for we can park free again. What I'm asking is that you can look for somebody from my situation. I pay my own rent. I pay my own bills. I pay for my own food. And then on top of that, I know it doesn't seem like a lot to a lot of people, but adding $25 a month to that, it's going to be a struggle for me, and that's going to cost me not to be able to go to work. Now, I don't know if y'all know, if y'all go outside, but it get cold during the winter. I'm not walking to work while it's one degrees outside, but I have to because that's how I can make my money. And what's making that hard is that I have to pay to go park for me to go make more money. Now, that is my... What I have to say to you guys. I hope that you guys can respect that and see where we're coming from. Like you said, we're not against you guys. I love the new development. I love new things. It's turning into a city, and I think it's beautiful, and I want to spend 20-plus years out here. But in order for me to do that is, I have to be able to go to work and make money, and right now, having to pay for parking and adding that extra bill to my daily life is already hard. Thank you.
The next one on the list is Caroline.
Hi, everyone. My name is Caroline Dieterich. I live on 1206 Thurston Street. I work at Blue Stem Bistro. I actually wrote the petition that you guys have all heard about. So yeah, I'm also going to keep this short. I'm just going to talk about kind of my experience of this town as a college student. So back to four years ago, I did my college tour here, and yeah, I liked K-State. It was, you know, it's a great school. But what sold me instantly was my first walk through Aggieville. I got lunch at Solong Saloon. I got some coffee. I went to Wildside. So I come from Overland Park where all we have is food chains and big businesses. And so the authenticity and the community aspect of this town is ultimately the reason why I decided to spend these important years of my life here. I started working at Blue Stem the end of my sophomore year, and I love it. I love the supportive people, the atmosphere, and just ultimately just being a part of Manhattan. I didn't start the petition because I'm against seeing big changes in this place. I think that there are some great things coming. I started it because small business is a big reason why I came here, and I think that's true for a lot of people, or at least why people have fallen in love with this place and created so many memories. As an employee, I've heard major concerns within my coworkers, within people that have been working in Aggieville, and just nearly every college student that I've talked to, you know, have said, you know, "I can't imagine having to deal with that or having to pay that. I couldn't do it. I couldn't do it." And that's just kind of the pattern that I've been hearing over the past couple of months. So that's kind of why I decided that I've heard enough about this and that we needed to take a step further. So it's clear that we aren't working with college students and small businesses, which are huge factors of who we are as a city. When we do this, we're creating an environment that disregards the one thing that really defines us and makes us different than most places I've ever been, and that's the community aspect. I believe in growth and change, and I am excited to see what's to come, but I also believe in compromise and hearing all perspectives, especially those that matter the most in this city, which are those of small businesses. Thank you.
Nancy, you're next up.
Hi, I'm Nancy Evangelides. When I'm not at my house, I live at 1219 Morrow, which is Blue Stem Bistro. Can I just say thank you? I mean, my staff is so amazing. Everybody in Aggieville is amazing, and as you can see, there is a lot of necessity for you as a Commission and as representatives of Manhattan to maybe take a step back and take a look at what has been put into place. It is very difficult to run a business, period. And then you add on top of that having to combat increase in prices, increase in labor costs. Now, what's going to happen is, we are going to have to compete to get good people to work for us because why would someone like Jordan or Caroline or Hannah or any of the people in this room be able to or want to come and work in Aggieville? You have no idea. You guys are trying to stimulate Aggieville and growth, and we are all for that. I think everybody has echoed that over and over and over again, but I just think combined with just coming off COVID, starting construction, starting new construction, putting in parking restrictions, to me, just seems like a horrific hurricane, and it is not feasible, it's not sustainable. You are going to lose the very people that make up the essence of what Aggieville is. How many of you... How many of you go into Aggieville? How many? Okay. I love that one and a half of you come into Aggieville, but yet you have made decisions that impact me, impact Kevin, impact every other business owner in here, and you're going to dictate and tell me how you think it's going to be. All we want is a compromise. Give us reprieve. We want to be here when this is all done. I want to be here. I want to see what the greatest Manhattan can be. I am a Jayhawk, but I love Manhattan. I've lived here. I've been here for 16 years, and I don't intend to go anywhere. I only want it to be better, but we have to work together. I am on the ABA, you know, the Business Association. I've been a part of some of those parking meetings, and what was told to us and what's been delivered have been two different things. And when we talked about some of those things, we didn't have COVID in place. We didn't have all this construction, and it's just happening all at once. It's almost like you cannot get a break. If you want people like Starbucks and all those big franchises to come in, you go for it because that's where you guys are heading. Thank you for letting them have drive-throughs. Thank you for having an entire strip out on the other side of town that's nothing but franchises. It's great. I'm glad they're able to make you feel like you're doing something great, but you're not. At the end of the day, we suffer. All we want to do is provide something, a place. These kids here that come here, I love my job. I get to mentor. I get to watch them grow. Jordan texted me about two hours ago that he didn't think that he could do this, and I said, "Listen, just talk about what matters, what you're thinking." And he did an amazing job. Please reconsider what we've had in place. Take a step back. Give us a chance to survive because we're not going to be here. And if you want to have a Blue Stem Bistro cinnamon roll, I suggest you think about reconsidering what you have in place. Thank you.
Does anybody else like to speak about something that's not on the agenda for this evening? Please come forward, state your name, sign in.
Hi, my name is Nicolette Unruh. Similar to Nancy, when I'm not at my home, which is 7250 Troy Road, I live at 1101 Morrow Street, Suite 111, at Nico's Little Italy. In hearing all of the statements that have been made so far, I've made a few additional notes. I do think that, as many of you know, Manhattan was founded primarily based on Kansas State being a land-grant university in 1863, and land-grant universities were to improve the quality of life of all Kansans. And I think that one of the things we need to consider is, what is what we're doing with the parking garage and the things that we've talked about for many years? I'm a newbie to Aggieville, obviously. Are we actually making our quality of life better in Aggieville, or are we making it harder? Something that I wanted to bring about... Bring up about the parking garage was that I experienced, I went over there, I mean, I park on the opposite end of the Ville, in my private parking lot, which I'm very grateful to have, but I know that there's people who are young, who don't... But I know that there's people who are young, who don't know how to work the parking garage, who do not understand how the parking garage works. So, my guess is that the older generation does not understand how to use the lovely lot, which I think is a good thing. It's great to have that as an option, and I think the changes that are coming to Aggieville will be very positive in the long run. But I think what can be echoed through every comment that you're gonna hear tonight is that everyone would really like to get a little bit of reprieve. We would like to see some sort of, can we push back just a little bit right now? Do we need to charge? Can we take a breath? Can we, can we take a break? And at least give some breaks to the employees of Aggieville. I know my staff is challenged, and they're walking in the cold, and they're like, "Hey, I don't have anywhere to park, I don't know where to park, I don't understand how to park." And I don't, forty dollars a month to some of these employees is a lot. I know everyone, there was a comment by Jason Hilgers in a meeting with the ABA, the A-Bid, and he said, "I don't understand why." This is not a quote-quote, so please don't take that. But I don't understand why that's a big number. Forty dollars to a college student, forty dollars to somebody making as much as I can pay somebody, I'm, I'm paying pretty good wages, I feel like. But that could be three, four hours of their month, of their week, one week. And that's in addition to every other bill that they have to pay. And the city, like, not the city, but Riley County has very high cost of living and very low-paid jobs. We can do our very best here to pay more, but I can only do so much too as an, as an employer and also a person who sits here and pays my own property taxes. I think that was something that a person brought up earlier about property taxes. So, what is the city of Manhattan going to do to try to support us as small businesses and not continue to just bring in and support big business? So, I think we're doing a great job of trying to improve some business districts, but we, we've gotta support small business because that's what makes this small town what it is. I think that's what we all love about it, and that's what in eighteen sixty-three land-grant universities were founded on. We were, we were here to bring quality of life to Kansans. That's why we are here in Manhattan, Kansas. So, can we think about that when we're making some good decisions? And can we probably just push back some of these, like, decisions regarding parking? And I understand that we have to pay for the parking garage. I understand that we have to pay for those things. But let's consider what has made Manhattan and Aggieville what it is today. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your service. We appreciate you.
Somebody else was starting up there also. Just come on up.
Hi, my name is Laura, and I am a twenty-year resident of Manhattan. I came here in two thousand and four for college and have stayed here since. It's my home, and I would like to speak on the, again, the parking situation in Aggieville. So, the sense of community that I get from Manhattan, Aggieville is a big part of. And I feel that that is the case for many people who live in Manhattan, and it's why I've stayed, despite the lack of many well-paying, full-time employment. Adding financial and punitive barriers to a community hub such as Aggieville by restricting parking and ticketing people who used to be able to park there for free, for free, excuse me, doesn't make much sense to me. I understand that we have to pay for the parking garage, and as a customer, I'm willing to do that, but charging the employees and this already struggling businesses twenty, thirty, forty dollars a month seems like it's harming the district that has brought so much profit and so much economic growth to Manhattan, and seems counterintuitive. The city is investing money in the area because it's profitable. Again, what makes it profitable is the community. Seeing that community and seeing a place that I consider home placed at risk is concerning to me. So, my request here today is to at least rescind the restrictions and the requirement to pay for parking for the employees and the businesses so that it can continue to thrive. Thank you.
Excuse me, Laura. Nicolette, would you please sign in on the sheet at the podium, please? Your name and address. Anybody else that may have missed signing in?
How about if you slide it over to the right, and then we can?
Oh, yes.
You can sign when you're done here.
Okay.
Hello, and my name is Amanda Moss Teller, and sadly, I am no longer a Manhattan resident. I came to college here in two thousand and one and spent twenty wonderful years in Manhattan and have been priced out of living here. You know, I worked for the Riley County Historical Society for like seven years. I've worked for the USD School District. I have also was catering director for Jimmy John's in Aggieville and was directly affected by the parking issue, and I'm here to stand for, like, I love Manhattan's wonderful community. That's what kept me here. That's what, you know, like, has kept my family coming back to K-State and Manhattan for generations. When my mom retired, she decided that Manhattan was the place she wanted to be. But I could no long, you know, like, I could no longer afford to, to live here, and I, as somebody who spent many happy years working in Aggieville and things, and I've been, you know, like, worked as the employer and the employee, you know, like, being a manager, and there's just so many workers that can't afford that. Like, you're, you're taking food out of their mouths, you know? You're, you know, the ability to heat and cool their homes, you know? And if people also, that's taking away their ability to spend money in Aggieville or downtown. I used to live downtown, like, on Pierre Street. I love the walkability and, you know, the access that you have. That's, that's one of the things that makes Manhattan so wonderful and that keeps people coming back. Even though now I live near Wichita, I still come back and do my shopping. I just spent hundreds of dollars in Aggieville today because I love those small businesses and those people, you know? And, and they matter, and the workers matter, and they are what create our community. And it's not just corporate entities and things, but the people that, you know, like, you are here to serve and that are like serving the community themselves, because, you know, and I, as a K-State alum, you know, yeah, I come back, but we can't forget about the people who aren't just here on game days, but are here three hundred and sixty-five days a year cleaning up vomit in Aggieville, working, you know? You're gonna, you know, like, are they gonna come and, you know, at two in the morning and do all this stuff? You know, it's a safety issue. It's like, I've heard for twenty years, like, okay, we're gonna have free parking, it's gonna be better, this, that, or the other, or we're gonna get better public transit, and we've gotta have one or the other, because you can develop all you want, but if you can't get there, you can't park there, you can't have workers working for you, the businesses won't survive, you know? And it's just kind of simple common sense to me, and I'm like, we love this community, and I'm excited for the economic development, and I wish, you know, like, I hope to be able to one day have more money and be able to come back here, because Manhattan will always be my hometown. Like, it's not where I grew up, but it is where I grew up, and, you know, I bleed purple, you know, forevermore and stuff, and I just really want to, you know, like, think about the workers. Think about, they are what helped make this community great, you know? Like, I've owned, I've owned a house here, you know, but I got priced out. Like, I just couldn't afford to keep living here and, you know, follow my dream and stuff because of, you know, like, I had to be able to choose to eat. I had to be able to, you know, like, the rent got so much that, like, all of it. And you're forcing people who might be able to stay or think about it to, like, leave, and that's, that would be such a shame, because this is such a wonderful community. And I, I feel that it can only get better, but it's, we've gotta consider the workers, not just, you know, the business and, and what makes, what makes it actually work. And so, thank you for your time, service, and consideration.
Go ahead and sign in there, please. Can somebody else come up?
Good evening. My name is Felicia Lax Jefferson. My address is of twelve oh nine Ratone Street, Apartment Two. Good evening, and nice to meet you all. I'm from here. This is my home. I grew up here. Saw many, many years of development, from co-op all the way to what's going on right I'm here today representing a lot of things. My bosses wasn't able to come for their, you know, for reasons, and, but I'm also representing being from here as a local. Now, over many, many types of developments and changes that Manhattan has undergone, the one thing that, as far as what I've come to notice, there's not very much consideration for the local. Even when it is something to accommodate alumni or the college, Farm Bureau, the military, but when that tour is done, whether they graduate or what have you like that, they go. Not many stay. That's the truth. The locals are here to clean it up, to keep accommodating, serving, whether if it's in the restaurant, the hotel, gas station. These type of humble things that is not of a mind to a person, they just swipe the card and go on. But we are here, whether we're hearing the stress from the boss to clean that back up, or whether if it's to hear that another person complained and you knew that it was hogwash about it. We are here all the time, keeping the city afloat in hoping at least acknowledgement of our service. Now, to me, I'm learning all this. I'm learning how this works. I'm an artist. As I get into my community involvement, I'm learning. I'm learning this. But as I'm learning this, I'm coming to my own wondering, inquiry. I don't understand how you know the average fast-food place only primarily hires part-time anyway. I don't understand how twenty-five, forty dollars is gonna be squeezed out of that. I also don't understand where it is not considered where some people sprinkled in these environments, such as myself, because, you know, not all kids can do what we do when we're doing these service things, as you're swiping your card and going on. I love, I love what she said, being there for the young people. But let's face it, a young person is not gonna get down there and, and clean no toilet and trying to be out of there by eleven o'clock to be ready to serve you the next day. These are things that I feel have not been considered for someone like me to help hold some of these things together, that won't take the time, or they're too tired to even come up in here today. But it is a real thing. These kids can walk out at any given time just to look at Ms. Felicia, "Will you please?" And I will, I will. That's what I do. I will. But it's not even just for you. I have a family. I gotta put gas in that car. I gotta, you know, I gotta do these things to get to work. And while I'm passing all these ways to get to work, I'm understanding that I got to pay for parking where Burger King don't, Chipotle don't, right? But I'm paying this parking. Some of these, you even got it spliced in such a strategic insultive way that there are still even some people that do work in the Aggieville area, but they're not paying for parking. So, what am I supposed to say at the next interview? What brought you here? These are real considerable things that is going on. Why whatever diabolical development plan is happening, the time is gonna come when you're gonna open the door with that expectation, and it will not be the outcome that you are thinking. Somewhere, there has not been consideration. On behalf of me being from here as a local, on behalf of being an employee of Wingstop who is, happened to be a corporation that asked me to also come here tonight, I ask for all of you all to consider. I thank you. It's nice to meet you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Make sure to sign in there, Laura.
Good evening. Cam Ward, twelve oh two Morrow Street. Wanted to talk about a little different aspect of the parking that I've seen down in the district as a business owner. So, I'm standing in line at Blue Stem the other day, and there's a gentleman in front of me that is asking the staff there how the parking garage works. And the gal at the counter, since she's working there to make coffee and ring folks up, it's not her job to explain how it works. I stepped in and I explained to him, "Well, you've gotta do it on the app or the pay station and put in your license plate if you wanna get the two free hours of parking." And it made me realize that with this process, I think there was a lot of thought that went into it. But the current system with Park Mobile, the app, the pay stations are incredibly difficult and complex for the average person to use. If you don't have the app, you gotta download it, you have to make an account, you have to go into your email, get the code from your email, go back to the account, put a credit card in, save that credit card, put your license plate in, select the right zone, select the free parking. So, while I'm excited for the future of Aggieville, I think we do need to step back a little bit, see how the process is going, but more importantly than that is how we're communicating about the process. When I saw all of these young people here that wanted to speak about employee parking, and I saw the petition that went around, the first thing that came to my mind was where was everyone while this was being talked about for months and months and months? Cuz it was. But when I stepped back and thought about that, you know, I'm an active participant in city government. You've all seen me here before. I know exactly where to go on the city website, to the city government tab, to agendas and minutes, and I can look on the legislative agenda and see what's gonna be discussed, and if it applies to me or my business or my family, if I should be here or not. I think that's a pretty high bar for the average citizen, especially when a lot of our citizens are kids that come to school at K-State, and we can't expect them to know everything going on. So, I really wanna urge the city to think about the communication plan that we have. The city Facebook page has not posted about the garage or the processes there since January thirteenth, when I just checked before I came up here. And there have just been a lot of questions, a lot of difficulty. And I think that there's lots of times that we come together as a city government, you listen to the folks that are knowledgeable enough to show up and talk, and we make decisions, but I think there are times that we need to rethink those decisions. I was in those ABA meetings with the city staff when we were talking about parking, and I didn't seem to think there was gonna be an issue with employees paying to park, cuz I knew the garage had to be paid for. But it's one of those times, now I can step back and say, "Okay, as a leader on the ABA board, maybe we haven't gotten this right." Where we definitely aren't getting it right is the communication, cuz I think if the city put out that this was a really important thing that was going to affect the bottom lines and pocketbooks of part-time employees that are full-time students that are trying to pay their bills, I think we could've seen these young people here earlier, and maybe we would've made a different decision. So, I would just implore the city to think about how we communicate, how we educate, and how we get more people like these in this room for important topics, instead of waiting until after something's into effect to get them here when the ordinance is passed, and now we gotta backstep if we're gonna change it. So, thank you.
I'd like to try to wrap up the public comment by seven o'clock, so about twelve more minutes, if you wanna come up, talk fast, and get in line, and we'll try to wrap up in ten, fifteen minutes.
Hi, my name is Kayden Pop. No, I am not related to Chad Poppy, the choir director at the high school. It is spelled the same way. If I am not at my house on Houston Street, I am either at Blue Stem Bistro or attending school at Manhattan Christian College. I'm not originally from Manhattan. I actually am from a place twelve hundred miles away from Phoenix, Arizona. But I tell people that I'm from Manhattan because I love Manhattan. I graduated in two thousand and seventeen, came here for a semester, and wasn't able to afford a second semester, had to move back. But I knew that I was being led back here, moved here back in two thousand and twenty, started school again in two thousand and twenty-one, and I have wanted to work in Aggieville since I was here January of two thousand and seventeen. I have been lucky enough to have that dream come true. I work with all these lovely people from Blue Stem Bistro. That has been my number-one place that I've wanted to work. And, you know, coming as a college student, I'm twenty-four years old, so I'm a little bit older than your typical college student. Right now was a hard time. Coming off of the heels of COVID, everybody was screaming, "Yes, support small business, support small business, support small business. We need to keep these businesses up because that is the heartbeat of a community." I am all for improving that community. I think the parking garage is a great idea because that allows more people to park and experience what it is. experience what it is that makes Manhattan Manhattan. But with the rest of the construction in front of Varsity Donuts, with the construction on points, with the new construction that just finished up in front of Chipotle, but now they've taken all of the parking from behind Chipotle, where we used to park, where we used to be able to park and walk in. I live just off of Houston Street. It's a two-minute walk, but when it's five degrees outside, I can't do that. I can't afford to park, and I have to be at work at five in the morning to go bake these cinnamon rolls, these scones for y'all to be there, to come and enjoy. I love my job. I know everybody else here loves their job. But there was a point a couple months back where I had to choose between paying rent and buying cheese at the grocery store, between paying rent and being able to eat. And so there were a couple nights where I didn't eat. And so where we're at now is luckily, I do, I can pay for groceries and rent, but if this comes into, if this comes into play, I don't know if I'm going to be able to do that. I might have to find a new job because we're not getting enough people coming in to Aggieville. This, this is the reality. I'm all for construction. I'm excited to see what Manhattan is going to look like because I believe that we can make this place somewhere where people feel like home, where people feel like they're walking into their front door and they know who's going to be there, waiting to greet them when they get back. A great teacher once said, those of you who do anything for the least of these, you have done this for me. You are looking at the least of these. According to the city, we are the least of these, but we make the city. We are the people who keep this city running. We are the heartbeat. The students are here 10 months out of the year, but what happens in the summertime? When people like me who've decided to move here full-time, to be here, to commit to living here, 1,200 miles away from their family? My whole family is in Arizona. I get to see them once a year. I believe in Manhattan. I believe in what, everything happening here. I believe that this is going to be a beautiful place, but what is the cost of that beauty going to be? Is that going to be the closing of small businesses? Is that going to be the loss of employees in Aggieville? Is that going to be the loss of Aggieville in general because we cannot sustain having open businesses there? I'm not asking for you to stop construction. What I'm asking is that you show compassion, that you show mercy, that you show grace to us who are trying to figure this whole thing out. You do not deserve to be attacked. You're doing your job. Sometimes we make bad decisions or decisions that haven't been fully thought through. I thank you for everything that you have done, for your willingness to sit here and to listen to people, whether that be people who are expressing concern or who are a little bit more angry. But you signed up for this position, and we're asking you to take that seriously and to hear us and to show that same kind of grace and mercy that we are wanting to extend to you. Thank you for your time. Thank you for listening to me, listening to us, and I hope that maybe you would take what we say into consideration. Thank you.
Kayden, can you sign in, please?
Yes.
All right, well, I think we've gotten the message about parking in Aggieville. Does anybody have any comments about anything else that's not on the agenda? Do you have time for any one more speaker? If you'll, if anybody feels like they have something new to add? All right, double time, chop, chop.
It's about parking, but you can hear more of it. My name is Cara Othick. I live at 1215 Laramie Street. One thing that really hasn't been talked about, has been a little bit, is the safety of the staff that works in Aggieville. There are lots and lots of young people that work in Aggieville, a lot of 18-year-old girls. Okay, even if you're walking from Aggieville on a Wednesday night, there are a lot of drunk people, males, females, it doesn't matter who it is, there are drunk people, they are obnoxious. There is, there are staff members that have to carry their pepper spray to the parking garage. There have been staff have told me that they feel scared and they're just, you know, worried that something may happen to them. Walking to the parking garage, this is a block. Why are we having to have that fear of our safety and then also the fear of not being able to pay our rent, not being able to pay for our groceries? Most of these jobs are, you know, you get paid 850 an hour. That's not a lot. It's not a corporate position. It's nothing like that. We are doing what we can. We are doing what we can to provide the service that we can to the best of our abilities. We get people that are so incredibly rude to us, but we still have to hold our ground and we have to come into work every single day, put a smile on our face, and do the best that we can. So why are we having to pay more? Give more of what we are doing and worrying about how we're going to get to work, how we're going to park? I'm fortunate enough that I live close enough to walk to work, but I have coworkers that live on campus. They live at the scholars, like, houses. They have to walk over a mile to work. And there are staff members that can't work there anymore in the village because they can't pay for their parking. They're working what they can, they're going to school, they're students. What more do you want from people? We're doing what we can. Take it into consideration because without Aggieville, I mean, is it going to be Midtown? Do you want this to be some franchise, some just big corporation? Because that's just not what Manhattan is. I'm from Kansas City. It's great, but that's Kansas City. This is the parking system that we have in place that is how we pay for our parking, that's what they have in Washington DC. That is the capital of the United States. This is not the capital of the United States. We need to scale it back, do something smarter for the economy. Change is great. Everything will be great, but you have to take into consideration what you're doing and how you're doing it to make a reasonable change for the businesses and for staff and just for people that come into Manhattan. Again, I live very close to Chipotle. Driving out, very dangerous because of the way that the construction is laid out currently. Laramie has turned into a one-way road where you cannot park. There are people that are parking on the road closed sign. There are, like, there are accidents waiting to happen. It's increasing the danger just in that area. No one is aware of anything. And again, with what somebody said about how corporations have their parking, that's so true. Right at Super Cub, which is a locally-owned business, that's exactly where you get ticketed. At Chipotle, you do not get ticketed. So please, take everyone's opinions into consideration, and I think that if you actually do go to Aggieville, which you all should, there's a lot of great things down there. So I would like to see, you know, more than one and a half hands that actually go to Aggieville, see what it's like, and experience the parking. Experience that because it is not fun for anyone. It's difficult for people that are visiting. I had a lady today talk to me on the phone. She said, I don't know how to get to Dusty Bookshelf. I can't figure it out. How do I get there? There's too much parking. I had to explain it to her. She was an older woman. There's a lot of older folks down here. We had an event, there were a bunch of townies that were there this weekend, and it was great. But again, the parking is not fun. It's a huge problem on game days, everything else. Just take it all into consideration, please. Thank you for your time.
Make sure to sign in. Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment for non-agenda items. Yeah, I don't know, it's, I think we're, we're going to have to do something and chat about this some more. I'd, I'd be willing to consider. I don't know, something, well, six months of free parking for Aggieville employees or something. We've, we've already got all the equipment and people hired to enforce parking, so we can't probably, yeah, just stop everything, but there ought to be some way to provide some relief for some period of time, at least till we get North Manhattan open or something and then free up some stuff. But we can't do anything tonight because it's not on the agenda and people haven't been noticed, and, and so we'll, we'll see about, talking, talking shortly.
Briefing session when we go over future agenda items and the majority of commissioners wants to put it on agenda, we can do so.
Okay. All right. So, all right, we'll do that. All right, Commissioner comments. Linda, you want to pipe up with anything?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Motta?
Just echo some of the things you said. Appreciate everyone who came down. I know one of our frustration points is we did hold multiple meetings and actually compromised ones already on Aggieville, but I think it's worth another look at. And I know everyone's left, but I know there's a couple of us that try to make it to the Aggieville Business Association's meetings every time they have them, and pretty much anytime I've gotten a call, even if they want me to come at midnight, I've come down to Aggieville to meet with them. So, maybe on to, well, that'd be the consent agenda. I'm done.
When?
Yeah, I'm a member of the Aggieville Business Association. I go down there, and I, I understand what the message is, and I agree with you, and we probably need to take a look at it, you know, again, at a briefing session and see if some adjustments can be made. I'm a little bit disappointed in the Aggieville Business Association because they didn't bring this to our attention. And, and of course, you know, they've been involved in this from the get-go, like the comments that hadn't been communicated. We've been talking about this for two years. So, but any change requires adjustment, so I think you're absolutely correct, Mayor, that we should perhaps relook at.
Senator?
Yes, I, I agree. I, you know, you need three heads. I think you have four nods there on to move forward before a work session at least. You know, there have been other times when we had, for example, swimming pool fees where we had to go back and revisit. We've had the Peace Memorial Auditorium, which almost would have been non-existent if we didn't go back and revisit, roundabouts which we had to go back and revisit. So this is one of those things, even though if it's after we've passed ordinances and had listening sessions and, but we haven't. Once it's implemented, I think that's when we get the unintended consequences, and that's what we're seeing now. And that's, that's exactly the feedback we're looking for. I wish Adrian was here, or at least relay all of this information to Adrian because it's very critical to see what, what she is seeing out there, too. We want to be fair, but we also know we have bills to pay. So I want to make sure we take all of their voices into consideration and adjust what we need to do.
All righty, we will move on to the consent agenda, which is a bunch of items that are normally routine or housekeeping in nature, that have been reviewed by the city commission before and/or can be approved by one motion. The commissioner may request an item be removed to a separate discussion and considered immediately following the consent agenda. And I'd like to go ahead and move item D2, the Development Code item, out of the consent agenda to talk about afterwards. Anybody else got any other issues?
Stole my thunder, so that's.
Dang it.
You're moving it to the general?
Yeah. And so, so we will go ahead and open up the consent agenda items for public comment. If anybody has any issues with the Sarah Malt Beveridge licenses, terminating contracts with franchise ordinances or things like that, now's your chance. If not, I see we're going to close the public comment on the consent agenda. And is there a motion?
Mayor, before we move forward, I was going to say, I would like to see E2. Did you say D2 before?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to see E2 also moved to the general agenda.
All right, D2, E2, we'll talk about here in just a minute.
I'm sorry, I'm not catching the distinction. So Mayor, you said D, ABC, D2.
Which is the MDC.
And then Nusha, you said E.
E as a head word.
Uh-huh, okay. E2. Okay, thank you.
All right.
And so we're pulling those off of the consent agenda. Okay, thanks. I would, is the public comment period closed?
Yeah, no one cared about those.
I just wanted to say that I'll be voting no on the dissolution of the Arts and Humanities Advisory Board. That is D3. And I was, I'm interested in the discussion on D2 because I would have voted no, because that would have been my only alternative, but if we have a discussion, that may help. And then I'm going to vote no on ABC, D4 also, which is the dual office holding. I think that if every other elected official in the state of Kansas can hold two positions, it's punitive to restrict a Manhattan commissioner or from serving. I also have found, figured out that in addition to Jeff Underhill, a city commissioner from Junction City, holding a state representative slot, I've now discovered that Francis, what's his name?
O'Keeffe.
Our Camp is a city councilperson in St. Mary's, and he has, was elected to state representative also. This, and there are several from Kansas City. This is something that is done all over in different places, depends on the person. Some people can handle two jobs, some can't. And it's, but why would we just draw a line and say, nobody from Manhattan, Kansas can? So I, I, I still think it's out of place and it's unnecessary, and we're just making rules willy-nilly, one at a time. So I will be voting no on those two things. But I wanted to have my say before.
Did you want to comment on a consent agenda item?
Yes, I would.
You stopped, you stepped out, so I thought you were leaving, so.
Well, I wouldn't sure to provoke all here, but President, you've been a lot.
Come on up here to the, come up to the podium for a second, so people at home can hear you, too. So people at home can hear you.
Okay, my name's John Childs, and in relationship to resolution E2, I have some.
Okay, so that'll be, we'll be talking about that separately.
Okay, I thought you said you.
Well, we, we moved it to the, to the general agenda, which will be in two minutes.
Okay, gotcha, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's fine. All right, is there a motion now for the consent agenda?
I want to make one positive comment. We've had a lot of good, negative ones. There's three grants on the consent agenda, and they total close to half a million dollars, and going to make some big improvements to recreation trails and also to the Roger Schultz Community Park. So that's a good thing that, you know, Parks and Rec gets beat up all the time, but they've got three good grants here, and it's going to make a big difference in improving the Parks and Rec situation.
Very good. Anybody else? Okay, now we'll take a motion.
Okay, I move that we approve the consent agenda minus the items that have been removed.
Is there a second? Okay, Commissioner Ray. It's been moved and seconded by Commissioner Butler and Ready to approve the consent agenda. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Ready? Yes, but no on D3, D4, and E1. Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Fisher Motta?
Yes.
Fisher Morse? I vote yes on the, most of the consent agenda and no on, removing that one. So that would be D3, which is the dissolution of the Arts and Humanities Advisory Board, and D4, which prohibits dual office holding for Manhattan City Commissioners. And I vote no on the, what, E1, I guess, about the Arts and Humanities Advisory Board.
Motion carries.
Well, yes for me.
Oh, Mayor Hannah, so I'm sorry.
That's okay. You're fonder there.
Motion carries five to zero, with the exception of item D3, which carries three to two, item D4, which carries three to two, and item E1, which carries three to two.
Very good. All right. We will move on to the discussion from the agenda, the consent agenda, item D2, which is approval ordinance number 7627, amending the Manhattan Development Code as presented in the staff report. So my reason for wanting to talk about it is, is the change in the interpretation of something having to do with some of the lots in Redbud. Because last time when we were talking about it, that issue had not been decided upon, and now apparently has been decided upon, so we need to know what that is.
So I'll try to cover that to a certain extent, and certainly, I know the owners of Redbud are here and would like to comment on that information as well. So we had first reading of the MDC ordinance, which, this is a second reading before you tonight. The purpose of the amendments to the MDC were to correct some previous items that weren't instituted correctly, and it was some cleanup of things that we've had the MDC now for a little over a year, and so, and one of those was to, when the new MDC was adopted, there were some more strict floodplain regulations that were adopted. That wasn't the intent for that, but when the language was moved over from merging the two codes, they were, the, the language that was in the MDC version was kept, and that created more restrictions than we originally intended. So that was the primary aspect, and the modification that's being recommended to that is to take it back to what it was prior to the amendment. it back to what it was prior to the amendment, which was what was adopted in 2015. So they are restrictions. I don't think there's any dispute to any of that and how that applies to the organization. The subject with regard to Redbud, we issued from 2015 to 2021 roughly about 35 to 40 permits for new units to be set up there. That was not this current ownership that those were involved with, and we made errors in applying those permits and didn't take into account all of the floodplain regulations that we should have at that time. So that was an error in that implementation. And so we do not, that's been suggested, and I think you'll hear it some more, that somehow the amendment to this code should rectify that situation. And it would not, in our opinion, it would not be appropriate to rectify the code in some way to reference the errors that we made in enforcement. So we would recommend a process that we would engage the current situation, revisit each of those components, analyze what the issues are, and hopefully come to agreement mutually in conjunction with the state of Kansas, who also oversees floodplain regulations, to come up with an amenable solution. So we don't think it's germane necessarily to the actual code adoption.
Okay, so yeah, my concern obviously boils down to, we told them how to build them, how to put them, they mounted them, how they did them, according to the rules we told them, and now we're changing the rules. So obviously, yeah, it was a screw-up somehow on the city's part, and so, yeah, as long as we, the city accepts responsibility for screwing it up and fixes it, I don't care how we do it. If the MDC code isn't the right way to do it, fine, but I don't think, yeah, if they did it according to the rules that were in place at the time, that, yeah, that's the kind of thing that makes people mad at the government and don't trust us, because we changed the game after the deal. So let's, what questions or comments do Commissioners have before we open it up to public comment?
The city of Kansas.
Wait, timeout.
One clarification that, as the city manager stated, he's correct, the city issued a permit to set these, and they complied with the permit in setting them, but they, because the permit was issued without observing the floodplain regulations, they were not set according to the rules. They did not, they do not meet the floodplain regulations in effect at 2015. They don't meet the floodplain regulations in the MDC, which they've been the same if this amendment. So I just want to make it clear that what the condition that the Commission needs to think about is that there's 40-some lots that, to some varying degrees, don't meet the floodplain regulations. And yes, that's a result of the city issuing a permit without verifying compliance with the regulations, but they have, it's not that they met the rules, and the rules changed, it's that the city issued a permit and didn't verify compliance with the rules. So I just think that's important to know. You have 40 homes that don't comply with the floodplain regulations, and that's the concern of...
And obviously, the problem with that is potential flooding, but the second thing, and apparently there's some, we're going to get sideways with the state, somebody or the FEMA or somebody if we allow these 40 to stay noncompliant. Is that the deal?
Well, I think we have to have a discussion. We need to analyze what the issues are. I mean, there could be some that there aren't a problem with. There could be others that there's minor problems with, and they're really going to depend on some of the locations where all of these are spread out over the, over the facility. And I know the owner has other additional units they want to place, which they want this change in the MDC to go back to the prior regulation, so they can comply with it. And that's, we certainly want that as well. So I think it's going to be hard to, it really does, is going to take a process to analyze each of those units and to identify what the issues are. And some may have some state involvement, some may not.
Okay. So what's the city's obligation here? Because obviously, when they put these things in, the permit was approved, they were told that they were doing it correctly. Now if you come back and say they didn't do it correctly, I've got to think it's going to cost more money now than it would have been to do it correctly to begin with, because now you're going to have to like take that home off, set it up different, it may be old, could get damaged during that process. I mean, it's not, it's not their fault. They did what we said they should do.
So I guess the question for me is, will we, as a Commission, get a chance to weigh in on these discussions and solutions and options at some point in the future? Or is this the last time we'll see it, hear about it, wait, get able to give our opinion?
I will pledge to you to keep you informed of what our findings are before we enact something.
There you go. Okay. So, when?
Yeah, my concern was, you know, I got a couple of communications, and basically what was relayed to me was that the city had already made the determination that we're going to retroactively enforce this. So that's false, correct?
No. So there's been some discussions from staff to the owners about that we are going to do, look at the enforcement. We haven't officially done that. It was a verbal communication, and so as we prepare to engage with them, we'll develop a process to work towards mitigating and having a full discussion. We don't know what all the issues are. You know, I think there was some concern this was going to, they were going to get a letter, you know, next week, and here's what you need to comply with. We don't know what all those issues are, that they, that they should comply with, and how, to what extent they are, I mean, but, you know, we're certainly willing to meet in good faith. I think we have some common goals in mind. We understand a lot of the issues here, and I think, and I'm hopeful, that we can work together to resolve them. We might even be able to find some financial assistance measures to be able to work with folks to help remediate something if that indeed needs to be done.
Okay, I don't see, you know, I don't see this as, I see this as a separate issue in the developmental code thing. But, you know, my concern was, just like the mayor said, you know, we goofed up the permits, they didn't. The properties in my mind fit the non-conforming, you know, thing that we've labeled a whole bunch of things here in town that way. Are they a safety hazard? You know, like if somebody built a balcony incorrectly and we didn't inspect it right, it'd be different. You'd have to force them to fix that, because somebody could get killed. But these buildings aren't going to catch fire or roll over in the wind or anything of that nature.
Or flood.
So the only, only safety issue would be, okay, perhaps they would flood, but evidence suggests they didn't, because we had three floods, and my understanding is none of these, you know, particular buildings had water come into the living floor. So therefore, yes, and I guess the owners know that, you know, they're in the floodplain and not in compliance, but I think we've got to take a real hard look at, you know, are we going to spend a bunch of money for no good reason, forcing those people to do that? And so I do think the Commission may need to weigh in on the final decision, whatever comes out.
To help balance just a bit, it's not just the owner, it's the people who live there also, that are inconvenienced, whose cars get water in them. I mean, there are situations beyond just considering the owner is saying, eh, no problem. Flooding is an issue, whether, and to say that it's all okay, that your street has water curb to curb, or get your, up to your, some of your porches or whatever, I mean, we're talking about people's lives and livelihood, and we need to think seriously about that and not just, you know, elevating is an option, and they do it all the time in some of the coastal areas. And in some places, it might be elevating a foot. We aren't all, we aren't talking about a 10-foot elevation of a mobile home. Some of these are solvable at a lower level. There's, so you're right, there is some compromise, but I'm not willing to cooperate, to compromise right out of the box. I think there needs to be a situation-by-situation solution, because they aren't all the same elevation, they don't all have the same problems. There are people living on the properties, are there? Maybe that's a question.
I'm sure there are. Yes.
Yes. And so we're affecting residents here, too. And so I want to, you know, this needs to be carefully crafted, is all.
All right, I think we're generally on the same page there. So knowing that we're going to discuss this more, go ahead and come on up, public comment on this, knowing that this really isn't applied directly with what we're wanting to talk about tonight. So don't give us the 20-minute presentation, give us the five-minute presentation, please.
I only have five minutes.
Okay, then you're in business.
Got that clock there.
That's right.
Good evening. Paul Luber, Redbud Estates, back here two weeks hence. And thank you for, you know, the attention that you've given to this. I'm glad to see that all of you are familiar with the issues that I outlined in my letter, and you've really, to your point, Mark, saved me quite a bit of what it is that I might cover. I think you've adequately covered the code and the lack of enforcement and so forth. I think the critical thing, to your point, Commissioner Morse, is that, you know, in these three large floods, 2010, 2011, 2018, they were 200-year storms and the 1,200-year storm, big events. And I want you to know that I'm really sensitive to the desire of all of you to protect the welfare and the property of the citizens, and in my case, the residents at Redbud. That is something that we're very committed to. Having said that, in this particular instance, given the particulars of Redbud and its relationship to Wildcat Creek, the floodplain elevations that are specified are artificially high. And we realize this, and it is a big deal, Commissioner Morse, it is a big deal to take this seriously. We're not being glib about this whatsoever, but in these three storms, none of the homes in the normal part of the park were flooded. In fact, most of them had, you know, minor flooding in the yards, but the streets act like storm sewers. They were, you know, yea-deep, and it drained down into Wildcat Creek. But no, no homes were inundated with floodwater. In fact, it came up on the skirting on some of these, but not, the skirting is the bottom part, that's between the ground and the actual structure. You know, it might have come up, you know, this far. I have some pictures, which, I'm not sure if we have those or not, but in any event... We do. Yeah, you've seen them, they were on the back of my letter. Their letter. So, trying to watch my time here. The fact that with these three large storm events, we really feel that that's compelling evidence that this is really, like, it's a solution in search of a problem. And again, Commissioner Morse, I'm very sensitive to your views. We're not taking this, like, we're taking it seriously, but there is not a problem with these homes becoming inundated, and some of them are probably set below the flood protection elevation. Whether that's six inches or a foot, I don't know. We haven't analyzed all that data yet, but those homes, whatever elevation they're set at during these three big storms, did not get flooded, and it didn't even get up to the bottom of the home. So we think that this is an issue that could be taken care of. We've actually put in front of you, we discussed with Katie Jackson earlier this afternoon, my attorney, Bill Barr, and I also, if you have any technical questions, I have Ian Reiki here, who is with Schwab &amp; Eaton. He's our civil engineer and is quite informed on the intricacies of the floodplain and why it's too conservative. So we'd be happy to discuss any of those with you, any of those aspects with you. So I think that really, I think what I want to say is, you know, there's, there's like 30 families potentially that could be dramatically affected by this. And I mean, you talk about people complaining about parking in Aggieville, this is easily 10,000 bucks a pop, and if you multiply that over all these homes, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars. This is a serious financial issue, and, you know, it's something that, again, I'm very sensitive to your views, because you've been very articulate about them. We do not believe that there is a flooding issue with the homes in Redbud at this, at this time. So we'd like you to consider the motion that we put in front of you. Katie was concerned about some of the legalities with it, and we've conditioned it on approval by the, you know, state of Kansas Department of Agriculture, and we think that it's a reasonable notion under the circumstances. It is a much quicker solution than the deliberative things that Ron talked about, but again, we think that this is, this is a, there isn't a problem here. There isn't a flooding problem. So I guess I'll close with that, because I have 14 seconds, and I'm happy to answer your questions. We have Bill Barr, who is our attorney. He can speak to some of the legal things. And again, Ian is...
Thank you.
A lot of time.
You are.
Ian is here, too. He can answer floodplain questions. Thank you.
Paul, can you sign in, please?
Yes.
Over there on the right. Anybody else want to weigh in on this Manhattan Development Code updates, corrections, and improvements?
Sure. Yeah. My name's Bill Barr. I'm going to live at 1730 Humboldt. I'm an attorney with Arthur Green Law Firm here in Manhattan and represent Redbud Estates, MHC LLC, and Seneca Capital Partners. I do want to point out, as you're aware from Mr. Luber's presentation, Redbud Estates has been working with city staff for a significant period of time regarding the Development Code and other related items. Redbud Estates has appeared in front of the planning board and also in front of the City Commission on the first reading to express their concerns. They are committed with their purchase in September of 2022 to providing clean, safe, affordable, attractive, unsubsidized workforce housing, and they intend to infill 60 to 70 manufactured homes, which is a need for this community. As you heard in the earlier presentation, they're recently informed about the intent to have violation notices issued on 35 different homes. We do want to work to try and find a solution here, and I'm hearing some support for that. We think the retroactive enforcement is problematic and really is unnecessary and unfair and unreasonable, as outlined in the letter. You would be talking about likely raising the homes, but there would also be eight to 10 other requirements on each home. You're talking about the water, you're talking about the air conditioning, and then you have the issue of displacement of those residents, along with potential damage, which was mentioned as well. They recognize, and Redbud understands, that any new home that's going to be set in the future, if the Development Code is passed, would be compliant with a new floodplain ordinance. We're not talking about that issue at all. We recognize that, and they intend to comply with that. And Redbud Estates recognizes that flood regulations are serious, they're important, safety issue, and it's a very sensitive topic. They want to do the right thing, and they're committed to that. But as, as you've heard, the recent events in 2010, 2011, and 2018, there was not damages to the main part of the community, and that is significant. The enforcement would have an impact on the families, and they'd be displaced for a period of time. And the new ownership, I think it's important to point out, the new ownership did their due diligence, and they were assured by the city that there weren't outstanding issues such as this. When you're looking at fairness and equity, that's a significant factor as well. And then from a reasonableness standpoint, we have to look at the cost, a piece of that. You're looking at likely 8,000 to 10,000 at least per home, then you're looking at the displacement and additional costs. We're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars. And this is relating to an issue that has not been, there weren't damages to these homes in the most recent events, which were significant. The city of Manhattan, as you're more aware than anyone, did the affordable housing study, which mandated there's a need for affordable housing in this community. Redbud, as a new community partner, is stepping up and wanting to help solve this issue by providing that type of attractive, affordable, unsubsidized workforce housing. They have plans to infill approximately 60 to 70 manufactured homes in the near future, which would be a significant influx of affordable housing in this community. But for this to occur, there needs to be city cooperation and assistance to accomplish that goal. They have, they have nine homes that they applied for a permit and have received a notice to stop, and that's part of what brought this process to the forefront and to our discussion. If the Development Code and the amendment that we have proposed are passed, these new homes would certainly be set according to the amended code... And that's part of what brought this process to the forefront and to our discussion. If the development code and the amendment that we have proposed are passed, these new homes would certainly be set according to the amended code. And then we would know what, they would know what the plan is relating to their existing homes in the park. They understand and are willing to comply with that. We're asking for support of one of our two solutions. The first is the motion that was presented, clarifying the development code as it relates to this issue. Or alternatively, as been presented, directing, working with staff to allow the homes to remain as-is and working out a solution that's agreeable to Redbud and to the city and to the residents that live there. Thank you for your time. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I think we're good. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to talk about the Manhattan Development Code thing?
I just...
Okay, I will close public comment fire away.
Just remind that it's not just Redbud Estates. But when, if we were to change, agree to change the Manhattan Development Code, it would affect other mobile homes located in the city. And I assume it's just limited to manufactured homes. But this is broader than just Redbud and the new owner's request. And, you know, so I think it is, we have to do our due diligence by examining these situations and get a clear perspective on what the city needs to do.
So, I think, based on our conversations from last time and this time, I don't know if it's Brian or Bill or who, who would be able to nod their head vigorously, if I get it right. Those lots are compliant with the old FEMA floodplain lines. The problem is FEMA has new lines, or we have new floodplain lines based on upstream development and potential maximum runoff that raises the floodplains in those areas to the point where those houses are, would be, those 40 places would no longer be compliant with the future FEMA lines based on not-yet-happened upstream development. Is that anywhere close to right? No. Dang, that would have been too simple.
I think Stephanie is ready to talk.
Okay.
I'll take a stab at it, and then others are going to weigh in as well. They were never compliant with the 2015 floodplain regulations. We do have that special future condition, Zone X, we call it several different things. And that has a different standard for Redbud. There's another mobile home park that has a few lots that would also be applicable, or it would be applicable to. So that's part of the issue. And part of the issue that it's not currently compliant, and it wasn't back from 2015 to 2021, was because, as Katie and Ron have both said, we did not, we did not check as part of our permitting process to see if it was compliant.
Okay, go stop. Now, what part of it actually isn't compliant? Is it not, is the base of the building isn't high enough?
That's, yeah, and that's where I would have Bill probably weigh in. I think there's probably going to be a couple issues. One is the tethering, or the, what is the word, Bill? Strapping? Anchorage, okay, anchorage. And then there's also some that there's likely going to be a height issue of where those were set. But I think we will keep reiterating, there's quite a bit of research we still need to do. We still need to work with Redbud to fully understand to what degree there is noncompliance, and if there is for all of those lots in question.
Yeah, the thing for me is, is that you've got this nameless, faceless FEMA guideline stuff, and then you've got human eyeballs looking at things on the ground, looking at where flooding happened. And you're, as a person, you go, that don't make no sense. Why do I need to move and raise these things when the last three major floods, one was a 1,200-year deal, Noah's Ark-type of a deal, which probably never happened again? And if it wasn't flooded during that, why do I need to change something? As a private citizen who looks at stuff and go, that government regulation doesn't make any sense because it didn't happen. If it didn't happen then, it ain't going to happen next time because that was a once-in-multi-generations, centuries kind of a deal. So that's my perspective. You just can't take the human factor and figure it in there because FEMA isn't a human and doesn't look at stuff logically. There's guidelines that have to be followed, don't matter if it don't make any sense. There you go. There's somebody who knows something.
Scott French, Fire Chief. So basically, my department's responsible for issuing the building permits. In 2015, Chad was our floodplain manager. Those new regulations that came out required a floodplain management of these, of specific areas within the floodplain. As part of plan review, my department typically would notice, hey, this area is in a floodplain. We need to require this property to go to the floodplain manager to figure out what the requirements are for this particular building. For some reason, we don't know why, when those were adopted, through that process, to my department, who issues the typical building permits, there was no process set up for these particular buildings to get reviewed by the floodplain manager. So that's what we're talking about. We're talking about these 40 buildings, 40 mobile homes that were set without being reviewed from the floodplain management permit process. So we have to go back, all we're looking at doing is we have to go back because we issued a permit without the approved, adopted process that the commission approved. We issued that without going through that process. So we have to go back and review those on a case-by-case. Some may be all about the strapping. Some may be that they didn't meet the elevation. Some of them may not have needed anything more. That's the process that I believe city staff is talking about. We have to review these on a case-by-case, and we can provide with you what is determined, what we need to do moving forward. And we'll work with Redbud. And a lot of these are not Redbud property. These are individually owned mobile homes. That we need to work with that property owner and figure out how to solve the issues, too. They need to be made aware, they may not know that the property was set at a wrong elevation. Those are all the things that we need to work through. But, yes, the original issue was when we issued the building permit, which is a setting of the mobile home. We did not follow the adopted process to get with the floodplain manager to determine what was required at that time. I don't know if that helps clarify it, or I just muddy the waters more.
No, I think...
But basically, that's my understanding of it.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I understand. I'd rather table it and not make any decisions on it right now.
Well, I think...
But I, yeah. I just wanted to clarify, you know, when we had those floods a few years ago, we said we should have a sign that says, this is a floodplain area, or flooding happened here, so that future tenants or owners would know that. Is this one of those areas where we put a sign like that?
It's private property.
I don't, I don't think so. We did on some of our buyout areas.
Okay.
On public property.
Right. And so, I don't want to penalize anybody, but it also seems like if, a few of them have to follow FEMA rules, all of them would have to follow FEMA rules. Even though we weren't, we were the one that may have not returned to make sure it was being followed, I don't think we should reduce the expectation not to follow FEMA guidelines. Then everybody's going to come and say, well, you didn't have, they didn't have to follow it? Why did I have to follow it? And we may end up getting penalized by the federal government at that point for simply not following what they're trying to make us adhere to. So I don't think they should be penalized, but I do think we should at least revisit them. Each flood that happens is getting worse. I haven't seen anything less than previous ones. Each time we have something, it's coming in a period of 24 hours. And it's just, like I said, getting worse each and every single time. And if we don't fix the problem now, somebody is going to get hurt. And we want to prevent that ultimately. That's what hopefully the FEMA guidelines are for in floodplain areas. So I'd like to see at least a revisit and make them come back to compliance without a penalty from us. I think getting them back up to compliance is enough.
Well, I was just saying, is to get them into compliance, that homeowner, if we say they're out, I don't think we're going to penalize them, but they're going to have to spend like 10 grand to get their house fixed. It's interesting, we just had the Aggieville people in here, which we want to reconsider because it's 20 to $40 a month. Now, we're talking to people with not a lot of means, that we're going to come back because of our mistake. Because if it would have been done right at the beginning, it wouldn't cost as much it's going to cost now to get this fixed. And it's interesting, we want to get back in, because I was going to ask, what if we just do what they asked and pass their amendment? What would be our downside? You say, well, we're not following FEMA guidelines. Well, we haven't been following FEMA guidelines since 2015. Have they said anything to us?
The amendment would be legally invalid for other reasons unrelated to FEMA, which I've relayed that to the, to Redbud and their attorney. And I can go through those reasons, if you would like, why this amendment doesn't work in the MDC, this amendment doesn't work to accomplish what they want accomplished. And I know there was a mention of tabling it, but bear in mind that what is before you tonight is over 100 changes involving all kinds of changes to the MDC beyond the floodplain. And there is, the floodplain changes that are in here, ignoring their proposed amendment, favor Redbud Estates. They want to place some new, some new homes that if we make these changes tonight are less stringent for them, for the ones that they want to place for the future. So there's a benefit to them, and there's other properties waiting on the MDC to be changed. So I just wanted to provide a tabling perspective.
I know they already spoke, but I'd like to ask the question. Would you prefer that we just pass this tonight, if it's not going to include an amendment?
You know, we talked at length with Katie about this, and we conditioned the amendment on an approval from the State of Kansas, which was one of her primary concerns. There were other more subtle legal arguments that she made, which may or not, may or may not be valid. I'm not an attorney, so I'm not going to opine on that. She's a very clear and sharp thinker. I'll give her credit for that, for sure. But, you know, because of the earlier statements that I made and that Bill made about the fact that this subgroup of 40 homes not being, you know, having been flooded in any of these three major events, we would really like to tie a bow around this thing and amend the code with that, that motion that we proposed. You know, we, I'll just leave it at that. I don't know if you have anything to add, Bill?
Well, I guess my specific question goes, if we can't tie it up in the bow, is it advantageous for you for us to pass this so you can get on with your other work?
To Katie's point, there are certain features of the new, what I'll call the new amended MDC that are beneficial to us, yes. Yes, there are.
So given you can't get it to bow, you'd still like to see that pass, so you could...
I'm sorry, would you say that again, please?
If you can't wrap it up into a nice little package and be done with it, at least you'd like us to continue to move forward so you can get, get some of your new ones going.
Yeah.
Right, because it was suggested we table it, which would just delay the process without a resolution.
Yes.
So the question to you, because it was stated that you'd probably prefer to have, do you have it passed and not delay? And that's my question.
I suppose, given the situation, we would prefer it to be passed. We'd really like an entertainment of our motion, but, you know, I'm not sure that that is something that... Well, I'm not going to speak for you guys. That's up to you.
Thanks. Well, I was going to say, this is a little bit like the Aggieville parking garage thing. It's like, okay, we've got our attention now. We know what the deal is.
Sure.
We know we're supposed to be getting updates on it. I'm sure we'll hear from the people when they get the letter, who own their own trailers. So we will definitely, this will be a top-of-the-mind item, I suspect, over the next few months for us. And I'm sure Bill will be in touch with us when he's not having any luck with the negotiations and the solutions that the city is recommending. And so we will, we will be in the know, and we will be willing to listen to you on the first Tuesdays of the month until it becomes an item that really needs us to vote on something, I suspect, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We already closed other public comment. Could we, is there a motion to approve the MDC thing as it is, or you want to try to...
Yeah, my understanding is we approve this, and then there's a do-out on the 40 lots, which we'll hear about, and they may have to be individually looked at, as Scott mentioned. So, I move that we approve ordinance number 7627, amending the Manhattan developmental code as presented in the staff report and recommended by the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board.
Is there a second? I'll second it. It's been moved by Commissioner Butler and seconded by me to approve this. Please call a roll.
Under discussion?
Well, some discussion.
Commissioners can talk. I'd just like to say that the floodplain regulations by FEMA change about every 10 years when they redo maps. And just because it didn't flood in 2018 and inundate, Wildcat Creek hasn't changed one bit. And all, so we can have a flood like that in any given year. We need to be looking toward the future and the possible ways that we can protect our community and our residents and not be rushing to change one request. And so, I'm, my vote, well, you know where I'm going, when she calls me.
All right, call away then, Brenda.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
No.
Mayor Haddasol?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
No.
Motion carries three to two.
I was mayor in 2018 when we had flooding on Wildcat Creek. And it was sad, and this whole community mobilized. And we need, it left an indelible mark in my brain.
So why'd you vote no when this increased the ordinance and put us into compliance with FEMA?
We'll talk about that later. Okay.
That would be the question.
Item E2 was also pulled from the consent agenda by Commissioner Senator Ready. Could you talk about what your interest lies there?
Yes, I just wanted to know more about the owner and the lots. I think they ask here, even if we, if they're just asking for a resolution, the ask is, I believe, for $30,000 in tax credits for three lots, and, which I'm assuming are three homes, in 801, 805, and 806. And looking around that area, as far as the pricing of those homes, most of them were in the $300,000 range. So if we're looking at affordable housing or workforce housing, or whatever it might be, if we do something like this for this individual or this developer, would we be seeing more of this coming our way? And is this the type of workforce housing we're looking at? Because I'm not sure that even for the $300,000 homes, is that, is that something we are considering when we are considering tax credits going to developers?
Go.
And we do have the applicant, and we also have Ross Vogel, who you've been working with on this. My understanding that is, in the past, we've had tax credit resolutions that have come through. It's, the city has no part in this, we have no funding in this. The state is just asking that we provide a resolution, saying, yes, this fits within our workforce housing definition. What I would say is that a $300,000 home is actually outside of that definition that we've set. In order to be within that 60 to 120 area median income, we would have to have a home price of about $250,000 at max. So having tax credits such as this actually make it more feasible for the developer to build housing within that range without the city having to put forth any funding directly to that.
Okay, so then my next question would be, is there some kind of a guarantee that that house would be $250,000?
I believe that's a contract or a stipulation that the state would set, that there's probably some follow-up. I don't know if you've had experience with these before, maybe Ross can speak to that. Since it's not a, the city has no responsibility to follow up, I guess I would defer to Ross. He works quite, with quite a few of communities that do this. He's on, he's on teams.
Oh, okay, I don't see him.
Well, why don't we go ahead and hear from the applicant? Tell us why you're doing this, what the point is, why we should care, and how it works, in five minutes.
John Childs. Yeah, my name's John Childs, with JSE Companies. I've been a builder, came to Manhattan, wasn't born here, but I got here as fast as I could, so... But anyway, I've been building houses in Manhattan since about 2007. Came from Wichita and been up here ever since. So I've been, maybe about 300 houses up in Manhattan, Wakefield, Chapman. Was involved in an extreme home makeover in Chapman, a house that blew away in a tornado. So I've been around, so I'm not new to the area, and my heart is in Manhattan. We live here now, my family's daughter just graduated from K-State. Anyway, so, long story short, you know, I'm passionate about trying to build affordable housing. We came to that particular development, and there's a lot of buildable lots left in Manhattan right now. So most of my stuff is over in Pott County, just no offense, but there's no affordable housing or lots, so to speak. You've got Grandmere, which is challenging, high taxes, a lot of rock over there to build in. I have three lots... I have three lots left over in this development and I've done literally eighty percent of the houses over there. I don't know the tot, total amount, but basically, uh, two builders, uh, myself and Drapay Homes, uh, they took on the last little segment there of the cul-de-sac. So I'm, I've just, this, Ross, uh, and I are involved in a, in a low housing project in Abilene. So I hate to say this, but the housing is shifting to the outer areas. And I'd like to just do my little two cents worth. You know, we're talking about twenty dollars, forty dollars for parking is, you know, I'm trying to do my little part here in Manhattan to bring some affordability to housing. Yeah, three hundred thousand is a slab house now. Hopefully we can get those prices down. The idea, it's a, a brand new program that the state came out with. They've been working on it diligently. We thought it was going to be out last July, but it's a statewide program. It's mainly geared for smaller counties, smaller county, the more incentive they give you. So right now we're doing things in Chapman, Abilene, Pot County, um, so three little lots I've got left over, trying to do my thing here in, in Manhattan. You guys are either before you're afford affordable housing or you're not. I mean, this is kind of your, it's a new thing that the state has presented to builders and developers like myself to help offset some of the rising costs of the houses. We've already seen some of my houses I built two years ago are selling for eighty thousand dollars more than what I sold them for. A homeowner's making more than the builder did, so, which is okay. But it's, it's a state program and there's no guarantee I'm going to get elected. It's all on a competitive bid, so anybody can come in and, and try to propose their tax credit, uh, to Manhattan. I maybe, I guess I'm the only one that's, has a foresight to do it, but, uh, anyway, that's what it is. The tax credits go mostly big banks, institution buy those credits. Uh, they get, get to write off on their, their income tax to the state and then, and so they buy the credit, the money then goes to me to offset the construction cost. That's how the credits work, so.
But it, they, they do that for, uh, I'm familiar with them in apartments, twelve flats and stuff.
Yeah, it's, it's not a new thing.
But they, they do it for houses too, or-
It's a new, new, brand new program.
Hey, John, may I, may I jump in there?
Go ahead.
Yeah, sure, Ross.
Yeah, hey, uh, Mayor, Commissioners Ross Vogel, uh, Heartland Housing Partners. Yeah, it's, it's, just to reiterate what John said, and I know you guys have a long meeting, it's a brand new program. Um, it is for any county under seventy-five thousand people. Um, it's a developer-driven or contractor deliver, um, contractor-driven program where the contractors, uh, are the applicant, but the guardrails on the legislation were to ensure that cities or local municipalities had a say by, uh, having a resolution of support. Here's the big factor for you all. This is what a port or, um, your workforce housing is going to look like if you're going to get there. Um, I've, I've been working in the region quite a bit and have been to a few of your meetings about workforce housing and between this and some other programs, um, the, the price points that you all need to hit are your one hundred and twenty to sixty percent AMI, which by the way, in the last six month or eight months with the increase in, um, in mortgage rates, has become much, much, uh, harder to attain. And when you started doing it, it was really hard to attain. So it's programs that, like this, that are going to help, uh, get homes, um, in that workforce housing, like I know you all have been talking about a good bit within your community. And this is a great program, new program. Um, it's thirteen million dollars a year around the state, it's going to be highly competitive. Uh, hopefully John will be successful. And to John's point, you have very few lots. Um, let's maximize those lots for the highest need in your community and the highest need is this workforce hous, or one of the highest needs in this, in your community is workforce housing and this is a good neighborhood to do it.
Thank you. Any questions for John or Ross?
Just, just to make it clear, so people aren't confused, it, it says investor tax credit program and my understanding is that's a credit on your income tax?
Correct.
That's, that's correct. So it's a, it, so John, John could keep these tax credits and use the, hit those for his state tech, state income tax, um, liability. Uh, more likely, and I can't speak for John's situation, more likely these will be sold to investors or banks or someone of that nature. And I suspect that's what John has told me he's going to do as well. Don't want to speak for him.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, because people were worried about property taxes early. This, this is not a tax abatement or property tax or, or any of that. It's totally different and it's a state-run program, so I don't have an issue with it. I don't see where the city loses at all on this.
This is in essence ninety thousand dollars to help you get attainable price or workforce housing in your community from the state, not from you all.
So, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I agree with Winn. I mean, this is the type of thing we need to look at doing so we can get some affordable housing. I think it fits right in what we've talked about. I mean, I'm about on every housing group there is in town talking and I was at the preliminary meetings and, you know, if it's two fifty or three hundred, I remember the arguments in those meetings where there's people talking about the thirty percent you can devote to housing and saying it wasn't right. The trouble was, there were some that were saying it's too, too high, but there's a lot saying it was too low. We're never going to be able to sell homes if we stuck to that. So to me, this is what we need.
I'm concerned that this, I'm concerned that this is a precedent and we're saying that three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand is in our, uh, workforce housing definition?
It's lower. It goes up to two fifty. So two hundred and fifty is the high point of our workforce housing definition. And I think that's where three hundred thousand came in, is right now a slab home is costing most builders about three hundred thousand dollars, which we're saying is not within the definition of workforce housing.
Right. Uh, whether, if we can take those references out and still move it forward somehow, I just don't want, I don't want the next person to, you know, to hang their hat on that three hundred thousand to three hundred and fifty thousand dollar house as part of our workforce housing initiative. Uh, that is too high for that. So maybe we just take that out of the re, out of the materials and, and the justification,
Commissioner, I'm not trying to belabor this, but what, what do you think you can get for a three hundred thousand dollar house near your community? Without specials?
I have no idea. That's, well, that's what the steering committee is starting to look at, because-
We, our housing market analysis group is meeting and is going to make recommendations, but they haven't made any conclusions yet, is the dilemma. So we're leaping ahead of that by saying in, in this material that it is, uh, in, in that house, in that ra, range. And I'm just taking exception to it as well.
Well, it's, it's going to be up to the state to decide if this is worthy anyway. So all we're doing is saying is like, if you can get the money and build a house thirty thousand dollars less than the guy next door, we bless you and keep you. And so that's, that's basically-
I'd feel better, I'd feel worse if there's a lot of competition around me, but this the last three lots we have, so I, and I, I running, running the same thing with, uh, compared to business with other builders, you know? If, but if I'm building a house at market prices and this guy over here next to me is doing a tax credit thing, he's got me beat as far as pricing goes. So I'm very cognizant of that competition thing and I would be a little more reluctant if I didn't, if there was only, it was, if there's a lot more ha, lots to be built in that same development. But, uh, the last three, it's, it's a good project for us. Let's see how it goes. If we get awarded, great, we'll be working with the state and be glad to work, be working with you guys. So I'm going to try to do my best to, to provide affordable housing. It's getting harder and harder all the time, guys, but well, I'll do my best, so.
Plus, if you talk to a real estate agent, we got what, forty to fifty houses for sale right now?
So I just have a, a couple of questions. I think one of them is, when I, I don't have the resolution in front of me, but in the resolution, it's somehow quantified that the, this was falls into our definition of workforce housing, whatever it is. If that is not the case and we have different, I, I, like Linda, Commissioner Morse was saying, I think that's what I was stuck on, because then that needs to be removed if we are saying that, because the committee has not met yet. There wasn't any discussion about-
They've met, but they haven't concluded.
They haven't concluded any-
And this sentence says, per the housing market analysis, this monthly rent would fall into the workforce housing definition, right?
And that's correct.
That's what I'm-
So that is correct. In the housing market analysis, we did establish what that definition is. It also has, and I have the chart in front of me, I carry it with me now, because I find myself looking at this a lot. Um, when we look at the workforce housing definition, it actually gives even a monthly rent. So not only does it give home price within that definition, it gives the rent. So here on kind of the upper end of our workforce housing definition, any rent that's between twelve hundred and eighteen fifty a month would fall into that workforce housing, um, definition. What, um, what we're talking about this evening, I think, is a thousand dollars lower than that upper end. So this would qualify, um, or it, it would meet the definition of workforce housing based on the housing market analysis and that definition that was put forth in that document.
So my other question is the rent part. So is this a, a single-family residential home or is it a rental?
These are single-family rental, are single-family homes that we'll do a rent on, will be rented.
So it's going to be rented out?
Correct, yes. We find a lot of, now, probably ninety percent of that market over there in that subdivision is military. So we find a military prefer single-family houses versus, and there's no duplexes over there, so the only thing we can do is single-family. Uh, but it's a very strong military market community. Uh, some of the houses we've, we've built, like we started building that development back in two thousand and eight. And, uh, so this is like, if we're, I can't remember how many lots we had in that, maybe eighty, ninety lots in that subdivision, Scenic Meadows subdivision. Um, so a lot of the homes that were purchased, uh, back in the day are, are become rental houses now, so.
With the, with the soldiers, with the, certain military, the BAH is, is enough to be able to pay those, that rent apparently.
Uh, BH is about twelve hundred and twelve, thirteen hundred now, so they'll have to come out of pocket a little bit, but, uh-
It's enough, yeah.
You know, it's, it's either that or they find some kind of an apartment to live in, so at least we're providing a single-family home, uh, that, uh, that they much prefer. I mean, it's a hot area for re, uh, military because it's close to the fort. They can get right on scenic on the K-18 and a quick commute, so.
So we're talking about more transient families?
I would say a majority is going to be probably military, just to be honest with you. So yes, obviously, most of them are here two to three years, so.
I think, you know, the state will make the decision on whether you get the, um, the tax credits or not. I just felt it needed a little bit more vetting in the conversation-
Sure.
-because, uh, there was a lot of language there that I, I wanted to get familiar with. It's up to you whether you get the, the funds or not, but in my, my opinion, and when I think about workforce housing, is for a more sustainable workforce that wants to come live and stay here, uh, and not be as transient is, was my thinking of when I thought about what we were looking at as workforce housing. Now, if it's the military, whatever it might be, if that, that's, I just wanted to get a clear understanding what your thoughts were and you also have an understanding what my thoughts were. All five of us would probably disagree on-
We do, yeah, we, well, the majority of my houses are for sale, but, uh, we do some for rent. Right now we're seeing a big shift in the market from purchasing to rentals because frankly, people just can't afford the interest rates right now, uh, and the down payment money is a concern. So if we, if we can't sell them, then we will rent them just to give that affordability factor. We can rent them at, uh, seventeen fifty to eighteen hundred a month, a lot cheaper than our mortgage payments would be, so.
Yeah, I, I sat down with a bunch of realtors this afternoon and they were all looking for houses to sell, uh, not so much rentals. So that's, that's the focus I was thinking on about tonight's meeting. Uh, thank you, I, I appreciate your responses.
All right, we'll, uh, throw this open for public comment. If anybody has any comments on this resolution authorizing a private developer to apply for tax credits, come forward. If not, we'll close public comment. Is there any other discussion or a motion?
I'll, I'll make the motion that we approve resolution number two zero seven two three dash B, authorizing a private developer to apply for the Kansas Housing Investor Tax Credit Program through the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation for single-family homes for rent located at eight oh one, eight oh five, and eight oh six Bramblewood Court and the Scenic Meadows subdivision.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Butler and seconded by Commissioner Mata to approve the motion. City Clerk, will you call a roll?
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Mayor Hattasol?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
All right, good luck.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. We'll move on to the next agenda item, which is a public hearing, hearing about considering levy, considering levying, special assessments. And Rena, our finance director, will tell us all about it.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. Tonight I will present information on our May two thousand twenty-three bond issue. And then after that presentation, we will open up for a public hearing. The city sells bonds twice a year, normally in May and November. For the May series, we have seventeen special assessment projects. All benefit districts were established by petition and a resolution on January twenty-fourth. The city commission set February seventh to be the date of the public hearing. All property owners were notified by letter about the amount and purpose of their assessment and a notice of public hearing was published in the Manhattan Mercury on January twenty-eighth. The purpose of the public hearing is to hear questions or objections from property owners concerning their assessments. At the time of the packet preparation, we had received no calls regarding the calculation or any technical issues regarding the assessments. However, since the preparation last Friday and on Monday, um, I did notice that there was a clerical error in the notice of public hearing. There was a reference to another, um, location in section thirteen of that public hearing. I reached out to our bond counsel and they informed me that the clerical error would not invalidate the public hearing and we do not need to republish or have another public hearing. And it was in relation to Browning and Kelly Avenue. That was the reference and it should have, um, that was not the reference. It was Stonehaven and it should have been Browning and Kelly. The cost information and the resolution and the legal description were all notified correctly, as well as in the letters. And then I received a call or an email from a developer of Stonehaven regarding the cost for the sewer and water improvements. And those two projects included costs related to the balances of their engineering contracts. It has been determined that those balances are no longer doing payable. The sewer amount was three thousand nine hundred and forty-three dollars and the water was eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars. So those amounts will be removed from the calculation and I have calculated that for this evening and inserted it in this presentation for you all to review, um, which will reduce the amount of the project costs. I have updated the PowerPoint presentation to reflect this change and have worked on the updating of the ordinance for the next meeting prior to publication in two weeks. So here was the original information that was presented in the packet, um, estimated of five million, six, five million sixty-five thousand dollars for the bond issue, of which four point seven five million will be for special assessments and three hundred and fifteen thousand for the city at large. And so the Stonehaven amount right here for that sewer and then that water is where the difference is, okay? So the total was four seven five one, one thirty-eight and then five fifty-seven, two forty-seven for a total of five million, three oh eight and three eighty-five. And then with that correction, it's just a little bit less than five thousand dollars difference for those two amounts added together, plus the bond and discount fee. So those two amounts did change. The total amount that we will bond, it will be the same. Here is a map of all of the special assessment benefit districts that will be, um, bonded this May. I've provided a, a map as well as an estimated annual assessment for all of the improvements that are going on in two thousand and twenty-three. So sewer, street, and water for Chapel Hill. That includes the Ames lots ten through seventeen, Chapel Hill lots one through six, and then Elijah Edition Lot twenty-five and Lot twenty-six. And then the estimated special assessments related to each of those lots. And those are on a square-footage basis. Next is Scenic Meadows, Unit Five, Fossil Ridge. They have sewer, street, and water, lots one twenty-six through run thirty-four, and they're all on an equal share per lot basis. The next is Scenic Meadows, Unit Three, Plum Thicket is the main street, sewer, street, and water. They are equal share per lot and they're just various lots, lots thirty-four through thirty-nine, sixty-eight through seventy-two, eighty through eighty-nine, and then Lot one forty-three. St. Luke's Waterline, there is a tract one and tract two, and that's the pink and this yellow color that are a part of the benefit district. There's also a city at large that has the city picking up a piece as well as a benefit fee area. When, if and when those lots do, or tracks do connect, then this is their portion of what they would pay over twenty years. And if, and when they do connect, those, um, reimbursements would go back into the And if, and when they do connect, those reimbursements would go back into the water fund. They will be picking up the total city at large amount. So if we go back to this original calculation for Saint Luke's, that amount is one eighty-four and eighty, one hundred and eighty-four thousand eighty-five dollars. And that includes the city's portion as well as the benefit fee area. The next is Browning Avenue and Kelly Drive. There were four tracks, equal share per lot, and then tract two, three was split into half. And so those are the estimated annual assessments for those lots or tracks. Stonehaven, this is the updated information based on, um, the correction I made. So here was the original information. These are also on an equal share per square-footage basis. This is the original, um, um, information I presented in the packet, and this is the updated. So a difference of about three hundred dollars a year on the sewer side, and then about seventy dollars a year on the water. The storm drainage did not change. Of special note, tract B does belong to the City of Manhattan, and, um, the special assessments will be paid by the sewer fund, water fund, and stormwater fund. We are working with Public Works and Utilities to determine if we will pay off the spe, um, those assessments before we bond, or if they will be paid off over twenty years, depending on how those forecasts look for those three funds. Cobert Hills, Unit Five, is this clubhouse, Lot Two, and the sewer, street, and water, and those annual assessments are reflected here as well. The next steps, approval of the special assessment ordinance, and then, I needed to update those dates, I apologize for that. And then property owners will receive a second letter, which gives them the opportunity to pay their assessments off, and that'll be by March twenty-fourth. If not paid, then the assessments will be bonded in May two thousand twenty-three, and then we'll sell the bonds on May eleventh, and then assessments will appear on the November twenty twenty-three tax statement. Excuse me. No, it's not, sir. It's supposed to be the twenty-first.
Okay.
I apologize.
That's all right.
Was she done?
Yes, ma'am.
And it's all twenty twenty-three, right?
Yep, I'm changing that right now. I totally apologize.
Isn't, I think, I mean, some of these are quite extraordinary as far as the assessments. March eighteenth seems like too soon.
It's, it would be March twenty-fourth. By state statute, they get thirty days to pay off their special assessments in full. If not, then they're assessed against their property tax statements over twenty years.
So do they know that we're having this discussion right now? Do they have a heads up on?
Yep, everyone received a letter, and included in that letter was, um, the date of the meeting, and then the special assessment process explained. Once we, um, have the ordinance, the second reading of the ordinance in two weeks, then the property owners will receive another letter stating, this is your assessment, and then you have the option of paying off by March twenty-fourth. And we will provide that payoff amount as well in that letter, and if they so choose, they would pay that by March twenty-fourth and forego the bond and discount fee. If they elect to not pay off, then they would pay it off over twenty years at the rate at which the bonds sell.
Okay, my, I, I just think, um, maybe we need to send another letter or something, because it just seems like it's not enough time, uh, unless there was.
We will send a letter after the second reading of the ordinance.
Right, but then it will be official, like, this is the public hearing, right?
Right, but that's the state statute, is you send the first letter to notify the public hearing, and then after the second reading of the ordinance, you send the next letter, and you give them thirty days to pay off, and then it also, the ordinance is also published in the newspaper.
It just seems like it's all coming too fast for.
But they, the amount due was on, on the letter you sent out about the public hearing.
Yes, and this is the, just the KSA twelve-six A state statute in terms of the timeline.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask, is this any different than any others?
No, it's not.
It's the same.
Some of the assessments are, are quite high. They are, and lots have sold, um, on some of these developments, and when, um, there are sales, the realtors do call, or the potential buyers do call and ask about the estimated special assessment. So those that are, um, current owners, they have been made aware. Potential owners, they would be made aware at the time that they purchase the lot.
Nobody should be surprised.
I can't say that, but.
That's why we can't afford the housing here sometimes. Um, okay, no more questions.
All right, any other questions for Rena?
I was surprised.
Um, all right, um, there's, uh, anybody here in the public here to comment on these special assessments? Come on up. I will officially open the public hearing.
Excuse me, sir, I'm sorry.
Uh, my name is Mark Humberger. I'm with New Horizon Homes. My address is nine eleven North Juliet, here in Manhattan. Just got a couple of questions. Um, I just received this letter, or it was dated January thirtieth, and I'd like to know basically how long it takes to get the project cost together once the, um, project is completed, because that would make a big difference on where I would buy a lot, uh, to build like a spec home and so forth. When I got this, um, letter, basically today, um, and when I opened it up, I about fell over, um, on the special assessments. Uh, the street is over seventy thousand dollars for the specials. Sewer is seventeen thousand, almost eighteen thousand, and the water is almost, um, sixteen thousand, which we pay another five thousand for the meter. I mean, it, it's really getting out of hand. I mean, I don't know what goes in the process of getting specials together. I know that you probably take bids on construction costs, but I guess my concern is, once it's done, me as, as a builder here in town, what would be the soonest that you could get some kind of a list or some kind of a, an estimate of cost for specials? Instead of just all of a sudden you open this up, and it's like, oh my God. Now, you know, that doesn't even include your local taxes. So to add this, and I haven't seen the taxes yet on this property, but I say it's probably going to be at least four or five thousand dollars, just regular taxes, and you add this, which is seventy-six hundred dollars. I mean, it's eleven thousand, it's almost a thousand dollars added to a payment. I mean, for a builder, that, you're going to be stuck with that property. That's going to give in some kind of financial problem. So I guess my question is, I would like to see, um, something as soon as the development is done that we could look at to see what kind of estimated cost there is. If there is already, I don't know about it. So that's my only comment.
So I'll jump in here for Rena, Brian Johnson, City Engineer. When these petitions are passed back in two thousand twenty, two thousand nineteen, when those petitions are approved by this commission, we estimate what those specials will be based on those costs. That's a not-to-exceed amount, so those costs are always less than that. So these have been in the hands of developers and builders since
Okay.
two thousand nineteen, two thousand eighteen. So all of these costs that you're seeing tonight are less than whatever that approved special amount was. And at any time, you can contact Rena or I, and we can get you that information also.
Well, the one thing that kind of threw me off is when I contacted, um, the office here, the first, uh, assessment was done, and it was two hundred and forty dollars and seventy-four cents, and I just kind of assumed that was just on the lot, you know? It didn't have anything to do with anything else. And then they said the second, um, assessment was going to be coming around, and that was seventy-six, forty-eight, twenty-four, which brought the total to seventy-eight, eighty-nine, oh-three, which is different than what I see there on the screen. This is what, this is what I got from a letter from you guys, and this is the letter that I got today.
Yes, sir. So the information that you receive from our staff member, that includes prior assessments. We don't factor in that information when we're presenting about the current information. There's a lot of information. So we don't include all of that prior information when this presentation is coming forth.
So if we take these figures here, and you total them up, right, don't you just divide them by twenty years then? Or am I doing something wrong, or is my math wrong?
No, you're not.
Okay, so if I divided this by twenty, that would be, that's fourteen is, is mine.
Seventy-six, forty-eight.
Right, but that doesn't add up. I come up with fifty-one, ninety-seven.
Because it has interest included, this amount.
At what, what percent?
We are estimating it at four percent.
Four percent, okay. All right, well, I don't see that in the letter, so I guess that's where my confusion comes.
Yes, sir.
It's not, it's not in this letter that I received today.
Right, and it wouldn't be because we haven't sold the bonds yet.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
But that doesn't help me when I go to put that on the listing to sell the house. I mean, then you're going to have a person that's going to be calling me and going, why is there another five or six percent tacked on to this when we put it in a listing? So, and I think I had a couple here tonight that was, I built their house, and I think that's why they were here also. So, anyway, that's where I wanted to kind of get across, so.
Understood.
Anyway, thank you.
Thanks for sitting here tonight.
Yes.
Anybody else?
Rena, is there a, a percentage that is a generic that you could, that he could? And I know interest is, chain percentages of interest are fluctuating, but is there a general rule of thumb he could use to tack on, like five percent, and he'd always, pretty much always be safe?
We've been using four percent for a considerable amount of time with rates increasing. I don't know if that
Okay.
should increase to about five percent, but, um, even this past year, we used four percent, and it was about three percent. So that is what we've also been using in our petition amounts as well, as Brian mentioned. Our, um, petition estimate is considerably higher than, uh, the actual cost. And so that information is also reflected when you all are presented with the petitions and resolutions, with those estimated special assessments. Will be, we can work as a staff to try to put information out.
I don't, I'm not asking that. I just, rule of thumb, five percent, and then he's, he'd always be covered, and it would be less than, um.
Right, yes, ma'am, but in terms of just from a public, um, communication standpoint, we can work as a staff to try to put this information out
Oh, I see.
earlier. Um, we keep our special assessment debt floating for up to almost three and a half years. And so we have to continue to incur that interest, um, and this is at the benefit of, you know, a good bond and temp note market, but then also for the developers as well. And so we've been doing that for probably about ten, fifteen years. And we can try to work through putting this type of information out, um, ahead of time. But sometimes it takes about a year or two to get the development actually complete before the costs are finalized.
Well, I know what a benefit it is to developers to have the city do this, uh, do it this way, uh, for, with benefit districts, rather than them incurring the cost of these specials and passing it on somehow. That, that just would be a huge, um, load to carry, and I don't think all of them could survive it. So I'm happy that the city is able to be a partner here.
So is, so as part of the deal, the reason we hold it for two or three years is so that, uh, they can get the land sold and then get a house built on it and somebody in it, so that, so whoever owns the lot isn't paying six, seventy-six hundred bucks a year on an empty lot while they're trying to decide who was going to buy it, what kind of house you're going to build on it?
That has been, yes.
That part of it at least?
It also, it, it gives that developer a little bit longer of a window to get the infrastructure built. Infrastructure takes time. These were twenty eighteen projects. They were built in twenty twenty, you know, it took eighteen to twenty months to get them to bid, so it allows that longer window too for the developer and for the infrastructure to be put in place. The longer that window is, the lower your, your infrastructure prices are. You know, when you, when you dictate to a contractor that they have to have this done in six to nine months, that's a really fast window, and so those, those prices go up.
And just historically, we used to bond special assessments as they were complete, and they were not on the complete infrastructure package. So we would bond the sewer when it was complete, and the water when it was complete, and then the street would be complete. And that would cause so much confusion with the current owners and then future owners, because you just would have stacks of special assessments coming on at different times, and they weren't prepared for that. So our goal is to bundle all of the special assessments, if at all possible, at the same time. Stonehaven has about eight or nine different petitions out there, resolutions. It was not feasible to work through that way because they still have, um, some infrastructure being put in out there. But the ones that were actually able to be complete, um, in terms of bonding, we took care of those now. Like I said earlier, we only have about up to three, maybe four years for a special assessment that, finance that after we've issued the temporary notes. So, um, those first three Stonehaven projects, those were the ones that we really needed to go ahead and bond now. And the others ones, we can, will renew the temporary notes and wait on those once they're complete.
So the problem is you trade some of the slightly lower infrastructure costs for capitalized interest over the, the bond time then.
And historically, the, that holding cost has been low. We've been at, at record-low interest rates, and our temp notes, you may recall, were one to two percent. So very, very low holding cost to hold it out over that period of time before we finally bond it. As we get more increases in interest rates, we may have to revisit that, that process, because our, our holding cost is going to be higher. And if we didn't do specials at all, uh, that would be a debate likely locally about whether or not developers have the wherewithal to go to a bank uh, and get that, although there's benefits to the end buyer with a thirty-year mortgage as opposed to twenty years on special assessments.
All right, any other, uh, public, uh, com, anybody else want to weigh in on the public hearing part? All right, if not, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any, uh, other questions about this? I would just like to say for the record, my name is probably on the Saint Luke's Waterline application somewhere. I'm not personally benefiting from it, because even though it's my church, they're the ones paying it, not me directly, so just a part of it. All right, if not, I will read the motion, since I talk really fast, and we'll go through it quicker here. So I have moved that we approve first reading of an ordinance for public improvements totaling five million, three hundred and some odd change that Rena changed, and levying special assessments against the benefiting properties in the following seventeen public improvement districts. Chapel Hill, sanitary sewer, street, and water. Scenic Meadows, Unit Five, Fossil Ridge, sanitary sewer, and street, and water. Scenic Meadows, Unit Three, Plum Thicket, sanitary sewer, street, and water. Saint Luke's Waterline, Browning Avenue and Kelly Drive. Storm Drainage, Cobert Hills, Unit Five, sanitary sewer, street, and water. And Stonehaven, Edition Unit Two, Amherst Avenue, sanitary sewer, water, and storm drainage. Is there a second?
I'll say again.
It's been moved by the mayor and seconded by Commissioner Butler to approve the motion. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Morse?
Um, I, I vote yes to adopt it.
Mayor Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
All right, we will move on to the general agenda, which is discussion about the reviewing boards and committees' draft policy manual resolution. Who's, uh, doing that?
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. Uh, tonight, we're going to go over this draft policy resolution that replaces the nineteen ninety-seven, uh, policy manual resolution we've been talking about at length with, uh, advisory boards and committees, so it's going to cover appointment processes, standard bylaws that each, uh, existing board will need to adopt, and the duties of staff, and give you a little timeline on where we're at, uh, with this process and the review of other, uh, boards. I've talked about this quite a few times, so I won't, uh, spend too much time, but just as a reminder for the public, our residents vote for you all to be on the city commission, and you, uh, appoint our boards and committees to provide you, uh, direction and feedback on matters of city policy. We, uh, put an asterisk up there. We have about seventeen advisory boards and committees, given we've dissolved, uh, a few, including two that we're going to discuss possible consolidation as our second item. A lot of appointed members, uh, and then multiple employees serving as staff liaisons for these boards. And then I always want to bring up our support departments that are providing support, uh, through human resources, uh, clerk's office, finance, and legal, and others who are providing that support for these boards. And this was a, a goal or an action within our strategic plan to revisit these processes. So we've been evaluating our existing boards. We're going to continue to evaluate some more over the next three months. Um, we're going to evaluate, uh, as well, uh, these future work sessions, some of their practices. But all of that, uh, really needs to, first, we're, we're going to have to focus on this resolution, which kind of is the overarching resolution that governs kind of how all of our boards and committees, um, operate. So that draft, uh, policy manual resolution that, uh, So, that draft policy manual resolution that you all were provided applies to these external boards that you are creating. It can apply, external boards, as in things like Riley County Police Department in certain areas. There are certain areas of this resolution that they're exempt. City boards and committees that you all create, as well as temporary boards, like the Workforce Housing Committee or the Strategic Plan Committee that occurred. It does not apply to any of you all serving in ex officio roles and various things in the community, like I know the mayor serves on the chamber board and things like that, so that's not within this scope. We have a section within the resolution that talks about the application process for individuals who are wanting to serve on city boards. They're gonna have to apply through a city manager's office established process. As we've discussed in the past, we have a really antiquated system that was developed by a person who isn't, hasn't been with the city for about fifteen years, and we need to update that boards and committee application software. So, we've, you know, purchased that software, we're working, gonna work through some implementation, but we want these changes to occur first before we go live. And it'll be just a lot better process, not only for our city clerk's office, not only for the mayor, who's looking through applicants on a weekly or monthly basis, but members of the public who are interested in wanting to know where the vacancies are on boards, what boards are doing, when they can apply. So, it should really help everybody. We've created some eligibility requirements for members of the public who are wanting to serve on our city boards. We have in there that they need to be eighteen years or older. We talked a lot about this stuff with some of you all at that December work session, so we tried to incorporate as much as we could into this resolution. One of the eligibility requirements is that, you know, an individual would need to reside in city limits or own real estate in city limits. I would put a caveat that in that resolution, if a board specifically has a different set of requirements, you know, the airport advisory board says we want someone from Junction City, those variations can occur. But when boards are created, this is kind of the first set of eligibility requirements, and then other boards can make a determination if they want to vary from that standard. One thing we, we mentioned is that city employees are not eligible to serve on city boards, except if it's a specific role within their position that's defined in that board that's created by you all. And you may not serve on more than two city boards as an individual. We've taken this opportunity to change our application process. So, we are, as we, as I talk about later, as we review all of our boards and committees and revisit their bylaws, we're gonna make sure that any board member term is gonna be ending on March thirty-first, June thirtieth, October thirty-first, or December thirty-first. That way, we can create kind of a quarterly process that's more transparent to the public. We can advertise open positions every quarter, get on a, a better schedule. And then this allows, you know, when a position opens ninety days prior to one of those expiring terms, we can post those positions. We're gonna accept applications until the, the mayor makes a recommendation and the city commission appoints that individual. One thing we put in there is oftentimes, there could be an instance where you have a board that no one is applying to be on that board. But the incumbent's term has expired, and they're still willing to, you know, stick around until they're replaced or maybe reappointed. So, we did put in there that, that holdover scenario can occur until their successor is selected. So, the mayor is gonna have to notify the city manager's office, much like it does now, within sixty days of receiving at least one or more applications. So, if an application for a vacant position is open, we start receiving applications. That starts that sixty-day clock of, okay, the mayor has sixty days to make an appointment for that open position. If that appointment isn't made, we, we do have in there that after that time period, the mayor pro tem can make a recommendation for an appointment from that candidate pool. It has to be from a, a person who has applied for the city commission to consider. And we threw that in there just because, you know, we, we need to make sure that, you know, these appointments are being made in a timely fashion. Much like it is today, the commission can reject a nomination for an appointment. The board, or the city commission can also provide a recommendation of someone within that candidate pool. We do have in there that the mayor will consider a new appointment at the next meeting. So, you can't appoint someone, you know, you all, the commission can't vote to reject a nominee and then select and approve a candidate within that pool during that same meeting. And that's for various reasons, one of the main being, we don't know if that individual is still interested, who's the next recommendation. They haven't been provided any notice of that, and the public hasn't been provided any notice that that individual is being selected. So, that's kind of the process that we, we've outlined in that draft resolution. The next thing that we attach in there is that Exhibit A, which puts forth standard bylaw provisions that we want to make sure every bylaw that every board adopts is included. Right now, we have bylaws that are, have been drafted twenty years ago, five years ago, ten years ago. Some say that you don't even, they don't mention minutes at all, or even posting an agenda, or what the quorum is, believe it or not. So, we wanna make sure all those things are established within that, those bylaws. So, we talk about in there, you know, setting the agenda, taking minutes from the staff liaison. We have the same attendance requirements that are in the nineteen ninety-seven resolution. So, you know, if you haven't made twenty-five percent of your meetings within a year, you know, that board, the chair and the staff liaison and the board can discuss that with that member. If they haven't made fifty percent, they can make a recommendation to you all that the person be removed from the, the board. There is just the standard provision in there that the board needs to adopt bylaws. Once they adopt the bylaws, they go to you all for final approval. The, the board can never adopt their bylaws, and you never have a say in it. That process has to occur, because they serve at the pleasure of the city commission. A quorum is defined in there, being a majority of the number of members on that board. We outline in there just the standard officers of chair, vice chair, how those individuals are selected by that board, as well as, I believe we have in there that you, you can't serve in a chair, vice chair role for more than three consecutive terms. And by terms, I mean one year as a chair on that board. Meetings and meetings procedures. We basically say in there that, one, you need to, you, you should set forth within your bylaws when your board is gonna meet, where they're gonna meet, what time, and also that that board is gonna follow the same meeting procedures that has been adopted by you all. So, that meeting resolution that you all have passed on how you conduct your meeting is the same way that any board and committee should conduct their meeting. The same goes with public participation. We have in there that that board is gonna follow the most recent public comment policy that you all have adopted. And in that, we have the same language that you all have in your meetings procedures about remote participation. We understand that that is something that sometimes needs to occur. The flexibility needs to be there, but we also understand that it's best that, we prefer that in-person attendance where feasible.
Jared?
Yes.
Where is the standard bylaw provisions? Is that anywhere in, in here in the policies that you're developing? I see, I see in our membership orientation, city board and committees, but is there? Because if that's the format they're gonna follow, they all should have it, and it should probably be included as a policy.
Exhibit A is what we're defining as our standard bylaw provision. So, any board that's gonna adopt bylaws needs to take Exhibit A and use that as the template and the guide, and have discussions on whether or not they can deviate from that standard provision based on this resolution. So, that, that gets into all those things on setting agenda, minutes, attendance, and bylaws.
So, the, do normally we let all the boards sort of make their own bylaws and stuff? They throw their own stuff together?
I think we may have over the last twenty years. The idea here, and, you know, our first work session coming up, February twenty-eighth, we're gonna talk with you about Human Rights and Services Board and the Partner Cities. You all are gonna provide a little bit of feedback on what you want them to do. A lot of that is more of that first section of what's their purpose. That, that doesn't really have anything to do with these standard bylaw provisions, so. But number of members, those things, that's where they, you know, how often you meet, how frequent. Typically, we'd like to see the feedback from the city commission on a lot of those things. But ultimately, yeah, that board is going to meet, create bylaws, and then that staff liaison is gonna work with the legal department to make sure that they're drafted in the right way, and we're, we're bringing forth a, a bylaw for you all to approve.
That makes me want to have a, a, a template with multiple choice questions. We are going to meet monthly, quarterly, whatever. We're gonna have a quorum of bank circle the number of members, so that this thing is a half an hour process of developing bylaws instead of a three-meeting process of developing bylaws.
Yeah, it, it shouldn't take too long for, for these boards to do that. The staff liaison is gonna walk them through. A lot of this resolution, Exhibit A, isn't gonna change. Yeah, you're, you're right, Mark, that, that number is gonna change of, all right, it's five members instead of nine members, or, you know. We're gonna highlight those things and guide the, the board through, here's the things you can change, and.
Don't we have them wander into the weeds too far on this?
Yeah, we don't want this.
Time when they should be solving a problem.
Yeah, that's why this Exhibit A, these standard bylaw provisions is there, because they're not gathering as a board and being like, okay, how do we create bylaws? What, what should we start with? No, we don't want that, and I don't think the commission probably don't want that either.
Okay, very good. Keep going. Is that, go, more, okay?
Yep. The other thing that we include within, I think it's, trying to make sure if it's in the bylaws or if it's in the, I think it's in the policy manual resolution. Yeah, it's in the, it's in the policy, general policy man, manual resolution over advisory boards and committees. And that's the duties of the staff liaison, they're there to ensure compliance with Kansas Open Meetings, Kansas Open Records, ADA requirements. They're the one who's gonna coordinate the meetings with the chair and the members to ensure that they're there, develop that agenda, make sure those minutes are being taken, posting notices, all following, you know, those statutes. They will help review applications of new board members coming in and can provide that feedback to the mayor so that they can make appointments. And then they're gonna facilitate that orientation training with new members. One change from the nineteen ninety-seven resolution, I think we had in there that a new orientation had to occur within thirty days. We kind of changed that to be within a reasonable manner. There are some boards that only meet quarterly, so, and you could have a board with a bunch of new members, so you might as well just give them a refresher on the orientation of their board at that next meeting. So, we tried to provide some flexibility there for our staff liaisons. This is that updated schedule that I just wanted to let you know. Based on your feedback tonight, we can approve this policy manual resolution on the February twenty-first legislative meeting. I also have on here, which I'll cover at the next item, but based on your feedback tonight on this new SSAB, we could also be approving first reading to create that new board. Here is where we're going to be reviewing boards over work sessions, and they're all listed here. We tried to lump them together in areas that would, would make sense. April eleventh should be a fun night, talking about all those Parks and Rec boards. You may have recalled, we had Airport Advisory Board on the February twenty-eighth meeting, but we needed to move that, because they weren't gonna be able to meet with their board in time to just give them a heads up on some of the stuff we're talking about. So, you pass this policy resolution tonight, you'll notice that it, it's not going to be effective until October first of twenty twenty-three, and that is so that you all can adopt it, the, the boards know what to do, and the, the standard bylaws that they need to work with. They're gonna have these work sessions with you all, get your feedback on their purpose and any other standard changes. They can continue to meet over the spring, summer, and fall to update their bylaws. Those go back to you, so that you can approve them. And then, beginning Oc, in October, when our new ninety-day calendars start, all, all the boards are gonna be working in the same manner. There's not gonna be one board working on the old ways, another board working on the new ways, and we can launch our new. It gives us time, all the changes have been made, so we can update our new system with all the requirements of our boards once, instead of multiple times over the course. And then, you know, everything's perfect and smooth moving forward, so. Any feedback or questions, that's all I had.
Jared, I, I like what, what's been developed here, I think it's more, more of what we're looking for. I do think it's important, the public knows also when those appointments are coming up, or here's a vacant spot, if they're interested, because sometimes they don't know. And, and, so, I, I'm, the advertisement part, I guess is what I'm trying to say. And then, no one can serve more than on two city boards. I don't think that was always specified, and maybe it was, but I know some that were on two or three board, more than two boards. What happens if somebody resigns or moves right away, and there isn't like a sixty-day notice or anything like that?
So, in that case, we would open, open up the application for that individual to fill that term.
Is there anybody to fill in?
Yep.
I don't have to be posted in.
Katie, you, you may know if, so say you have a board that has a, a three-year term, and one year into it, a person resigns, we go out and ask for someone to serve on that board. Are they just serving that, the remaining two years, or do they get a new three years?
They just fill the unexpired term.
Yeah, they, they fill the unexpired.
You gotta keep the stagger correct.
Yeah, gotta keep it, that's right.
And there, there's the part about, on D two, city limits or owns property, real estate within the city limits. What exactly do we mean by owns real estate within the city limits?
Or could that be added in their business or something also, or? Because somebody might own a business that they're renting the building, they don't, they don't actually own the building, they own the business. Is there a?
Is there a radius, I guess, is what I'm looking for? I mean, is it somebody?
It would be Manhattan city limits.
Man, the Manhattan city limits?
Yep.
Within the city limits, okay, I didn't see that part of it. But they, I mean.
Maybe to clarify, what if they live in New Jersey, but they own something within Manhattan city?
That's what I'm trying to say.
They're probably not gonna be able to meet the meeting requirements and things like that. Well, we don't, we don't encourage that, based on our new bylaws.
Yeah, that's something I want us to look at just a little bit deeper. I think there are some boards where you're going to say, we would like somebody from Potawatomi County or from Junction City, Gary County, whatever it might be. But for the rest of them, I think it would be best to have our city residents. I mean, we've always had a challenge of getting people to even be on these boards. And it's not because of geography, it's just because everybody has a busy life. But I think we should make more of an attempt, and especially if you're advertising those spots, to get, we have fifty thousand people in our community. You know, try to get some of them, encourage them to be on, on the boards, except for the ones that say that there's a regional aspect to them.
I, I'd like to make the case that we treat each board differently, as needed, for an, an out-of-city resident. So, on the, the Bicycle Advisory Board that is dead now, there was a, a slot for someone from Green Valley, and that was entirely appropriate. But I am concerned about something like the seven-member Parks and Recreation Board attracting seven people from Green Valley. And they all could take, be on the board when it's the Manhattan residents that are paying the taxes, and that board makes recommendations for recreational fields and equipment, and that, those are real expenditures.
Well, the, and the applicant's still gonna have to get approved by the commission, so if it's, there's some, I wouldn't vote to put somebody from New Jersey, even if Mayor Motta recommended it, it's like, the guy's in New Jersey. So, yeah, that's where, that, they could apply, the commission would have to say, yeah, that makes sense to put those people from Green Valley on there. And, and they'd have to make a tremendous case for that, and I just don't think in practicality, we're gonna run into some of those issues.
I'm not worried, I'm not worried about the New Jersey people. I am worried, I, I want, I, I think we have had the kind of representation on our, two members of our Park and Rec Board, our school, in the past have been school board members, they have both lived in Green Valley. They have represent, and, and brought the Green Valley perspective. But for the whole. board to be, and, and that's a potential, and it's not just that board, but other boards as well, when it is the Manhattan taxpayers that are paying the bill. And I, I want to take, keep that, uh, front and center.
But I think Mark's point still stands, that we'd still have to vote in a whole board of Green Valley people to do it, and I think we would only do that if absolutely nobody would apply.
Yeah, I think the way you wrote that, Jared, though, i- is fine. I think, you know, should be a city resident, and, and I do think there should be a provision there if you, you own a business or property that, that you can apply because you've got a vested interest in the city. You know, you might live in Pot County, but, but own one of the shops down in Aggieville, and it seems fair you, you should be able to be part of that. But you also put in there, you know, that the bylaws can have special cases for certain boards, so that covers these other things, like, like the airport...
Planning board's a good example, I think.
And the planning board.
They use the planning area.
So, so it has provisions for that already, so I think the way it's written is, is excellent.
I think the application form then has to capture both the person's residence and their business address, so that the commission can make an informed decision, because in the past, the staff has had to run around collecting information, the mayor has to go do research by, off, out here somewhere on their own, and so we need to make it as easy as possible for, uh, the mayor to make those appointments.
Yeah, the, the actual, uh, form that I guess you're going to update.
Yep.
You know, I, I had sent you, I think, a while back, it's been probably a year, a possible template, and, and my concept was that, you know, you'd have an identical, you know, three or four initial things where it would capture name, address, and general things, and then there would have to be specifics for each board, you know, explaining what it is and maybe some specific questions that we develop.
Yep.
That people answer so that, uh, you don't end up in just about everybody, everybody who served as mayor, and, and, and you, you read those things, you get a two-liner, I'd like to serve on the board because I care. And, and then you have to call them up and try to dig out, you know, what the information is, and so we need to, we need to get that upfront so that we got a pretty good idea of why and what these people are all about, because we may not know them. Sometimes we know them, and then it's, you know, a little bit easier, but, but if it's an unknown individual, we need to have good questions.
And that's a limitation of our current system. With this new one, we'll be able to tailor each application to the board, ask certain specific questions or certain requirements of where they live, so. And another thing that will be nice is, right now, you can fill out an application and you can select every board. I want to serve on every board. Well, now you'll have to actually fill out that one you're interested in so that mayor doesn't have to pick one person who's applied for eight different boards.
Where have I seen that person's name three times already?
When they, when they work on their, um, bylaws, I'm assuming we already give them the purpose of that board.
That's what the, that's what that work session will be about. We're going to show you, you know, give you the history of that board, what their ordinance or resolution that created it says today, and, and what their purpose is, and, okay, do you want to change that? Do you want to deviate from it? Or, is everything working okay? And you'll get that feedback, but we can also talk that night about, okay, is seven members enough, or do we want to limit this board to only city residents, some of that stuff, so that they can get that feedback from you all, and then it's a lot easier for them that day to, over the, you know, one or two meetings, to update their bylaws.
If we give them the mission, hopefully they figure out how many people it might take, and most of them, I think, are pretty reasonable in doing this out.
The only other concern I have, I, you know, I would like to add to the bylaws, but I don't want to complicate it too much. One of the things that, uh, I don't think the commission as a whole did a great job on the past few years is giving guidance to the boards. And so, I, I, I think it would be interesting, like you've got this October twenty-third, you know, kickoff point, would be to have in the bylaws that, that the committee should consider the guidance the commission provides at the start of the period, maybe that's October twenty-third. And rather than put specifics in there, like right now, I could say, hey, here's the specifics I want from the boards. That's going to change when the commission changes. So, so therefore, just a, a simple line that says every year, the commission, you know, the majority of the commissioners will provide this guidance to the board, and then they need to comply with that. Does that make sense?
I think I see what you're saying. That's something that we, we've been trying to possibly, you know, as a new commission is created through an election, we bring these boards back to them, give them an, just a, you know, we don't have to talk about it too long, but tell them about what these boards are doing, what they've done in the past, and that commission can give some feedback of, yeah, they're doing good, or why are they doing that?
I'll give you a specific example, actually, we're going to talk about it in the next item, but when you have the social services or the special alcohol, one of the provisions I was thinking of putting into the bylaws is that any organi- organization would need one full year of operations that was, could be reviewed, or they couldn't qualify, because that's, I don't, that's my view on it, that I don't want, I don't want to be funding startups and that type of thing. I want them to be able to prove they have a track record. And that could be said by the commission or it could be put in the bylaws, I mean...
It's, it's something we could also facilitate too, through our briefing sessions, as staff liaisons are getting feedback or need feedback in direction. Ron could say, hey, you know, this board's been meeting for the last year and they're kind of stalling, uh, you know, they think they've accomplished everything, or they, they don't know which way to go, and we can get feedback then too, so we just need to do a better job of consistently bringing it in front of you, so that five years doesn't go by and that our commission's like, what does this board do, or why?
But, but my thought is, if we put specifics like that, and I agree with John on that, should be a year, but we could just give that as annual guidance, because you may get five commissioners in ten years that decide they don't care.
They want to start up.
And, and then, then you have to go back and change the bylaws and do a bunch of administrative work, where this way it'd be just an annual thing, here's the list, you know, of, of goals the commission would, would like you to follow. And then, of course, if the board doesn't follow it, when they bring their recommendation back to the commission, it'll get rejected. You know, so there shouldn't be any surprises, is, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, they will, or even just, the, the commission can provide guy, yearly guidance or something along that line.
May.
May, may can, will.
Is the word?
They don't have to necessarily.
Well, it's like that same group, we said we were going to give them a budget to start with, we were going to tell you four hundred and fifty thousand, don't come back with any more than that.
Well, and you're right, and you might not have guidance for the cemetery board.
Yeah, exactly. Nothing, nothing new this year.
But the SSAB has been asking the commission for an amount for two years, and the commission's never given anything.
Right, they would want it, I mean...
And so, now we did away with them because it was their fault, right?
No, we're bringing them back, reincarnation. Okay, here we go.
Sure.
This is just discussion tonight.
Right? I think based on the feedback, we'll have this draft, or, we'll have this for approval on the twenty-first meeting.
My input on it is, and I said it when we met before, but we didn't really get much feedback, is we have eighteen-year-olds, I'd like to see it at sixteen, I do not believe sixteen-year-olds should be able to vote in elections, that's not what I'm saying. I would see this more as a developmental thing, they still need to be passed by the commission, I think it would be rare, but something if we had an exceptional sixteen-year-old that we could get him some experience.
I do think sometimes a student is a valuable asset too on a, on a board, but not the whole board.
Well, we'd have to approve.
Yes.
You could provide a similar provision like you do in the, where they reside, of saying, the standard is eighteen, but if a certain board feels like they, if the Parks and Rec Board feels like they want a younger individual on that board, you can, you could provide that language too, so that way, a blanket sixteen, but a board could make a case to you all, again, because they're going to change their bylaws, that, oh, you know, we think it, we want to increase or decrease this to sixteen to get more applicants, that can occur.
I think that might be more applicable to certain boards, obviously Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec, one that would benefit from that. But not the audit committee?
Yeah.
They have some guy that's really into like taxes or...
I think you could also do some things to tie some of that to our strategic plan as far as how, what the board's role and function is, and that could be something that comes to the commission at your retreat in January, is, you know, okay, here's, here's what they did this past year strategic plan-wise, is there something that you want them to focus on this next year?
Or maybe presenting them the strategic plan that we just worked on as guidance too, because you just never know what's going to come before them, but to provide what our, our role is, or what we, our thoughts were. Yeah, I think having youngsters on there is a great idea, it just depends on when those commission meetings are, or, I'm sorry, when those boards meet, um, but, you know, if you have somebody from student council or from any one of the organizations that has an interest, you're not going to get a flood of applications, so let's be realistic, but there might be one or two that are interested and, you know, want to participate, so it's always good to have, have them start early in policy decision-making.
And then the others, when you were talking about, you know, if the incumbents holding over, or then the mayor pro tem, or mayor resubmit, that's where you can get into the situation that if the majority of the board, and some boards that are, you know, they care about more than others, is you end up in like a standoff and not getting an approval. I mean, I like a provision that if a majority of the commission wants to go one way, they're not being held up by re-submissions, or if the commission rejects a candidate, to say they get to stay on the board, even though the commission voted them, uh, their reappointment down. Now, a lot of those problems would be solved if we actually elected the mayor based on the majority of the commission versus tradition, because then you wouldn't run into that situation so much, which can always be done, but we tend to do it by tradition, and then we end up with these conflicts because we appoint a mayor that not necessarily the majority agrees with.
Um, I, are you through, John?
Yep.
Okay. Generally, I'm, I, um, am pleased with what you've presented this evening. I think that this is the kind of thing we have needed for, I don't know, a long time, and, uh, I'm happy to have the, uh, these bylaws updated, and I know it's been a year-long project already, uh, working with each board on their bylaws, uh, but it's also an important, important thing for us to, and not wait twenty years to do some of these things, but this is, is, I do have a couple of concerns, and the first one is the, I actually, the, the part about or owning real estate, and I just, I, I think those should be selected carefully and not just a blanket for all boards. Uh, I would hope that others on the commission would see that also as a problem. And then on page three at the top, where the, it says the mayor pro tem will thereafter recommend, I think it should say may, uh, and, uh, so it says if the mayor does not recommend an appointment within the sixty days timeframe, the mayor pro tem may thereafter recommend an appointment from, uh, the applicant pool, uh, so that it's, uh, the language matters there. And I agree about, uh, the, the commission in the second paragraph on page three, that the, there, there should be a delay, so the commission rejects an appointment and, uh, then, and, but not at that same meeting should they select a candidate, I think it should go to a future, the next agenda. And, um, I, I wonder if you could give me an example of what you mean by point num, item number five about incompatible, um, boards?
I, I'll answer that.
Okay, good.
I know, it's a legal term.
As, as the one who wrote it, so, um, this incompatibility is, um, the Kansas case law on serving two offices, and we talked about that somewhat with dual offices. So what we're making sure of here, we, some of the things you see in here that you're commenting on, they're in here because these are the questions Brenda gets and at, forwards to legal when the bylaws or the ordinance or resolution haven't addressed it. So we haven't had a rule that you had to be over eighteen, some boards said that, some didn't, and what happens then, or reside in the city limits, is the clerk's office gets a question, is this person eligible? So some of this is gap filling, and this is one of those things. We also get questions on concurrent service, how many boards can someone be on? We've never had a rule, one way or the other. So in the, instead of trying to make that determination, we limited it to two boards, that way we have an answer, it can be three, it can be four, whatever number you want, but that rule can't supersede Kansas case law, which says you can't hold incompatible offices.
Right.
That determination is a legal determination, um, based upon the standards and case law. The AG's issued a lot of opinions on it, um, in terms of what's incompatibility, but, um, let's say, it, it doesn't just mean board, it's any public office they hold, right? So, um, because that's the Kansas law, if somebody is the superintendent of the school district, maybe it's, they shouldn't also serve in whatever position in a city-appointed office, but that, 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 um, evaluation occurs if they're appointed, it's, it's not something we need to try to regulate in here.
What are some examples of city incompatibility?
Well, I mean, it could be, well, there's all kinds of examples. I mean, it could be like, the city clerk can't serve on, we, we've addressed that, but...
You said employ, no employee.
No employees, right. So, really what you're looking at is, maybe like a county commissioner can't also serve on our planning board, there's an example for you.
Okay, alright.
Um, of an incompatibility, but that wouldn't, if we don't address incompatibility, we haven't, like, introduced that concept.
Okay.
So that's what this section says, it says that we're not, we're not allowing people who shouldn't otherwise serve.
Yeah.
From an incompatible, compatibility perspective to serve, that still applies.
I understand it, I just wanted some real examples.
Yeah, and it's, the reason we can't define it, uh, commissioner, is because the case law doesn't define it, it just gives some legal standards, and you have to evaluate it based on the facts.
I know it when I see it.
Yeah, that's a pretty good summary.
Yeah, right, like, like conflict of interest or something, I don't, I don't...
Correct, it depends on the facts.
All right, um, Nicolette, you care to weigh in on this?
No.
Okay, all right, all right.
Boy, you're...
Brian, we'll just open up the back doors, just so people know that we're still here. We'll open up the back doors and let them know we're still here.
We're looking for candidates.
All right, we'll move on. Okay, we will move on to the next, uh, discussion item in a minute when Jared gets back, which will be reviewing the draft ordinance and bylaws for the new Community Support Funds Advisory Board.
Oh, he's already back. But, um, so will it designate when somebody's incompatible?
No, if that, if someone has another public office and they want to be appointed to a city board, at that time, that's probably when the clerk's office would contact legal and say, hey, this person's also a county commissioner, can they serve in this position?
And that's one example, but others might be more vague than that.
Well, if they hold a public office, we'll know that on the application.
Public office, okay. When I was mayor, I was approached several times by people who lived outside the city, and I was glad to have the rule that they had to be a city resident, um, because it was, I was able to fall back on that, otherwise, the mayor's going to have to have a, a spine, because there are going to be all kinds of requests.
Okay. Jared, fire away.
All right, the new SSAB, so we've drafted, I will give you some background, and for those watching at home and in the audience. We will, uh, draft, we, we drafted an ordinance, uh, drafted bylaws based on the Exhibit A that you all reviewed tonight, and then we have an updated timeline. Again, do want to mention Katie and thank her for drafting all this stuff and putting it together, it's, uh, it's, it's going to be a really good process when we're all done, so. We got direction from you all to dissolve the SSAB and the Special Alcohol Funds Committee back in some meetings in December. You all took action on that December twentieth and approved dissolving those boards via either a resolution or an ordinance based on how that board was created. Within those documents, uh, there was a stipulation in there that until another board is created, you all get to determine how those funds are allotted, but you all don't want to do that, you want to have a community board do that, so that's why we are, uh, creating the new Community Support Fund Advisory Group, CisFab, it's a, just some name that we made up after multiple iterations. We are going to amend Chapter Two of the Code of Ordinance to repeal a, uh, basically defunct city environmental board that hasn't existed in over thirty years to our knowledge, we have no requirement of having this board. Katie noticed that and didn't want to create a new provision within Chapter Two, so we're replacing, uh, you know, it's all those numbers that you see when you're looking at the Code of Ordinances, so wanted to acknowledge that that's occurring in that draft ordinance that we're appealing, that defunct board that has not existed in a long time, and we're creating this new one. If you have feedback on the name of this, uh, board, it's not an advisory group, it's advisory board, but, uh, yeah, feel free to chime in there. Anyway, like all of our other boards, within that ordinance that creates it, we define the purpose of the board, so I'm going to go over a few of those that are described. The first purpose is making recommendations to you all on how you should distribute funds to social services in the city. That would be the previous SSAB fund, which is allotted by you all in the budget, basically from the general fund, and there's also those utility billing donations that we, um, receive that also goes into that fund, so that's one of the purposes and charges of the group, which doesn't come as a surprise to you all. The second one is making recommendations on how to distribute our special alcohol funds that we receive from the state and distributing them in compliance with the state law, uh, so that was the previous, um, fund that the Special Alcohol Funds Committee allotted those, those funds. So now this board is looking at both those funds, and they'll make those determinations and recommendations. And they'll make those determinations and recommendations to you all. The purpose of that board is also to establish that consolidated process for how they review potential recipients of the funds. Again, this is an advisory board, so the commission ultimately has final authority over those funds, just like those past two boards did. We also, again, wanted to, so the ordinance is pretty straightforward. It creates the board, it defines the purposes and it tells them to, you know, create bylaws and go forth. So we took that exhibit A from that new boards and committees resolution. We drafted bylaws. We repeat the purposes that are defined in the ordinance. We, as a group, have gotten together, we've been working with Rena, given her experience on these past boards and just the history of it. We landed at nine members that would serve on this board. It would, five would constitute a quorum, much like the previous ones. They would serve three-year terms. We did keep, like the other boards, a max of two consecutive terms, given just not having the same individuals on a board that are awarding, or not awarding, but recommendation, recommending awarding funds for a long time. And we think this is a board that residents and community members in the past have gotten their feet wet to kind of learn about the city, learn about things going on in the community so they can do other things. So it's a, it's a board that we think people will wanna serve on, so we don't wanna to limit it to nine people for the next, you know, 50 years or something like that. Did wanna mention that the city manager's office is gonna take over me and the staff liaison for this board, just given how closely it works with the city commission on establishing the budget. So, and we're meeting with you all during briefing sessions, so we just felt like it would be good to have a city manager's office step in there. The bylaws establish that at the beginning of the year, and this kind, this board is a little bit different than some of the others, where it just says you're gonna meet on the third Thursday of every month or every quarter. This one's gonna be a little bit more fluid, 'cause it's gonna be based, one, on the budget calendar, two, on the feedback from the commission on what funds they're willing to give that year. So the bylaws state that, you know, the staff liaison is gonna kinda call that first meeting to order with that group, work with the chair to establish that first meeting and the calendar for that year, based on the feedback that we've gotten from you all on how you wanna fund these, these agencies. And then we kinda go from there. And the draft timeline that we're gonna talk about later is our first shot at how we think it could go this year. And it could mirror that in future years. We put in there, in the bylaws, the process for reviewing grant funds. So the city commission's gonna allocate those funds within the budget. And then, once we know that number, then we can, city staff can work on that application process in concurrence with the new board. And we'll open that up for 30 days, much like we do now. The city liaison is going to consolidate and review and compile all those requests and provide them to the board so that they can make a recommendation and review those funding requests. And they can compare it to previous years and they can, you know, discuss amongst themselves. They can, the bylaws provide for opportunities for public comment from not only members of the public, but any applicants. If there's a certain agency that has taken up a lot of the conversation, that agency can come to that meeting and provide comment. We did limit the function of this board compared to past boards, mainly because you have, you know, nine members that are going to be reviewing anywhere from 30 to 40 agency applications. So we eliminated site visits. That's something that evolved over time with some of these boards. You have, you know, certain individuals who are only visiting a certain one, so that, you know, they only have a, they have a more, a better scope of what that agency does where others don't. It's time-consuming. There's Kansas Open Meetings Act requirements, so you can only have so many individuals go to it. So the whole board, in fairness, doesn't get to see or go to some of these agencies, so they don't necessarily have the full picture. And then again, just the time constraint here is, makes it difficult.
I wanted to comment on that. I know a lot of those board members, you know, thought that was important. So I'm not sure that, I wanna have it say no site visits, 'cause that sort of forbids it. But site visit's not required? You know, optional? I mean, I mean, it might be that, you know, there's 10 agencies and you know about all 10 of them, so you don't wanna see those. But there's an 11th application that's a new one and some of the board members may wanna go there. So I don't wanna forbid them from going, but I also don't want to be required to go to each one. Does that make sense?
Yeah. One thing we talked about, and we kicked it around and we settled here first, so you all could provide that feedback in case you wanted to, you know, increase that. We talked about the idea of if you're a new agency that's never received funding, yeah, maybe a site visit can occur. One thing I wouldn't wanna recommend, I guess, is you could have certain members doing, you know, why did you go visit their agency and let them give you all this feedback? Now I want you to come visit mine, because I need you to see what I'm dealing with too. So we wouldn't want that to occur, so that's why I think maybe the, the best recommendation, if you're gonna include site visits, is, okay, this board has no familiarity with this new board that's never applied. In that case, that board can, can take a site visit. And then in that case, you could also possibly allow the whole board to go there and do, and you could notice it and try and provide, meet Kansas Open Meeting Act. So something to think about.
Hold on. So why, why don't we let the board decide how they wanna do that? I'm on the Greater Manhattan Community Foundation, where we also review grants. And we have that option of, you know, either interviewing or talking to the executive director by phone or making a site visit. So they leave it up to the individual that's designated to a certain organization, organizations or whatever it might be. But if we're talking about the board and some of the bylaws and some of the options they can have, maybe that's a, it's in their purview to decide how they wanna see that part of it. I don't want us to make that decision to say no site visits.
Having never served as liaison for any of these boards, I'm, I'm just gonna go out on a limb, but giving that discretion to the board allows that process to evolve and morph from year to year, from chair to chair. And inconsistencies occur that aren't put in the bylaws, that it changes over time and makes it very difficult for the staff liaison. So, and then again, it's, you know, to be frank, we're talking about a list of agencies that get reviewed and a recommendation is provided to you all. And you look at the list and you look at the past year's list and I don't, you know, I also feel for the board members. I don't want them to have to go through a lot of work and site visits. So I just, you know, that's, there's always that line of, should the city commission provide that direction to the board on what, what do you think that board should do and how should they act?
Can we ask previous members? I mean, this is a discussion session anyway, right?
Yeah.
Discussion item. Maybe we should ask some of those members that actually served on those boards if they thought that was a good idea or a bad idea, too time-consuming, ineffective, or something like that, because I think that's important. We, you know, I don't wanna guess that part of it, because I think that is something they valued and brought to the table. And I think the organizations felt, felt good about, you know, oh, you're making an investment, you're actually gonna take the time to come and see it. I don't want it to make it a requirement, but I also would like their feedback on what they felt about it. If they felt like, no, that's a waste of time, don't do it, it's too much of a time burden. Yeah, I would definitely consider that.
Our process for adopting bylaws for every board is that the board itself has to review and adopt the bylaws. They recommend it and the city commission ultimately adopts the bylaws. So we, in terms of the site visits, we can put whatever the commission, if you have a majority opinion on it, but also that feedback could come from the board, because they are going to go through these bylaws. They're gonna send something back to you. But I agree with Jared that we need to address it in here. We did have here, a site visit specifically addressed in the other two boards because of the inconsistencies that were occurring and the applicants claiming favoritism in those things. So either we have them or we don't, or we have them for a certain category. We could say if you haven't received fund in the prior or last five years, you get a site visit. That's okay, just so that that uncertainty is addressed. But we could wait, if you would like, Commission, and have the, the board itself, once it's put together, they would send that back to you and then you could provide that final decision.
Yeah. And as a reminder, based on your feedback tonight, on February 21st, all you're gonna be considering is the ordinance that establishes the board. I'm gonna go over that timeline. The board's gonna create it. We're gonna try and get members. Then they're gonna consider these draft bylaws. And tonight, it's good, because I, as the probably staff liaison, can give them the feedback of, you know, we had this discussion and they think this is kinda what you should do. So that'll be helpful.
Yeah. Based on, you know, what you presented, I can see where some people would think it was unfair. Well, like if I was on the board and I went down and visited two agencies and then supported their funding, but not somebody else's, it's not gonna look right. And nine people, you know, if we say they're gonna do site visits, next thing we're gonna hear is, we need 15, 21. And I like the smaller-sized board, so I'm, I can see no site visits unless it's an agency that hasn't received funding, you know, in the past two years.
Part of it, too, the process does, you know, yes, we're not, you know, right now we're not including site visits. Doesn't stop the agency director or person from coming to that board, providing a PowerPoint during public comment, the Q and A occurring, but the whole board gets to be there, they all get to ask questions. And yeah, you don't get into that circumstance of one individual who went to this agency and was really passionate about it, and then you have another board member who's like, no, I wanna fund this one. I went there, I saw it, and that conflict kinda isn't there. At least everybody's in the same room talking. But if no one's ever been to this new agency, yeah, maybe we can include something like that, where we could schedule a site visit.
All right. What else you got?
This is just that timeline, so we'll, did I update this right? Yeah, maybe I did. Yeah, so we'll do the first reading for this new board on February 21st. Second reading would be March 7th. Then we could open up a application period for however long it takes to get more than nine people to apply and recommendations to be made by the mayor. We can appoint those new members possibly in April. We can orient those new members. They can establish these bylaws, so you all could approve them. The idea is, kinda what we talked about, given the timeline, but also, you know, we think this might be just a good standard approach moving forward, is that we know that the special alcohol number is basically set. They're gonna give us an allotment and that's what they have to work with. During our work session, that usually occurs in June, July, where we talk about agencies is where we can work with you all and, okay, how much general fund allotment do you wanna provide to the community support advisory board? And then, okay, that number, say it's $500,000, right, is plugged into the next year's budget. That gets approved by you all or blessed, and then we can start the application process outside of your budget process, so we can, all right, now we know that $500,000 is available. We can open up applications over August and October. That board can consider and deliberate and recommend funding to you all. In that meantime, you're adopting the budget and you're, you know, that number is still set and the money is gonna essentially be there unless, you know, the mind of the commission changes for some reason, then we can tell that board that actually it's $450,000 we need to. And then at a separate work session, that's when they're, we're coming to you all with the recommendation of that board to make those funding requests. And then in December, we can approve those grant agreements like we normally do.
See, I like that process. I would just expand it a little bit, besides just budget, like putting the number from the general fund, I guess, because the other two, the water bill and, like you say, the alcohol, it's, it is what it is.
Yep.
And they can spend that. Is, we give them the budget number, but also commissioner guidance as a group on if there's any that we wanna provide. Like one of the things John mentioned, like no new agencies unless they've been around for a year.
Yep.
You know, and just, just little bullets like that, 'cause I have two or three that, that I would suggest, but we, I don't need to go into those tonight.
Yeah. Any guidance you give upfront during that work session helps that board make a recommendation. And then at, in that November meeting, you're not, everyone's not, you know, kinda arguing, why are we recommending this one? We didn't want that, or that wasn't, so that'll be helpful.
Exactly. It'll eliminate all those surprises.
I think in the past, the board has had some standards for information that an agency had to provide. And so that would be essential for that first application also. And somewhere, I don't know where you'd put what that criteria is. I'm, I think you just have some operating kinds of guidelines that, so you don't have to put details like that in the bylaws. I don't expect that.
Yeah. I think actually some, they had into this, that they wanted two years of records, but if they went around for two years, it didn't matter, they just left it blank.
Well, and the first time I remember this latest organization applied, they didn't have all the paperwork. They didn't have, they hadn't been in business really a year. They didn't have their, all of their documentation, so they passed that first time.
Yeah. At this work session, we can, we can bring whatever the draft application is to you all, so you can see it and kinda give that blessing to. 'Cause that's something I've heard feedback to over the years, is that again, without guidance, the board starts adding questions to the application. Is it necessary? Does, does the commission use that to consider? Do you all, does that board need to use it to consider? So you all can see that and should hopefully just be a better relationship between the commission and the board.
They just need to be stable and dependable. And sometimes startups don't always succeed, so.
All right. Any other questions for Jared? All right. Well, thank you. We will look for more information here in a couple of weeks then. Is there, that's the last item on our agenda for this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Well, I'd like to discuss just a little bit about the consolidation of the, of the two boards. And my concern is that the commission's real intent is to diminish the amount of money that we're committing to the social service agencies. That's been the discussion here, by going to nine tenths of a mill or eight tenths or over a period of time, reducing it and turning it totally over to the community foundation. That was a couple of meetings ago. And I, I think there's been some comfort here in the community, knowing that the city did have, bring support to these agencies, so that they could use it as match to apply for grants. I mean, there are some legitimate reasons. And, and quite frankly, having that reliable support, I'm concerned, when Jared, when you said there might be 30 or 40 applicants, I think we've kept it to 10, 12, something like that in the past. It's been a lower number. And 30, 40 is scary for me. I'm not interested in that necessarily. But there's certainly, there are some, what I consider essential, community services organizations that, that we need to assure as a floor or a safety net in this community. And of course, the crisis center and the emergency shelter and are at the top of my list for support. And I, I know they get other funds too, but, so my concern is that we not just immediately not use this as a way to reduce the money commitment to the social services by 20% or 25%, just because we're changing the way that we've, we're going to be doing it in the future. The, and I do think giving the board an amount of money is important. But I, we, in the past, it has been, because we didn't give them one, the board came up with, with the staff. I don't know how you finally arrived at how much, but it was in keeping with what it had been the year before, for the most part, as a target, right?
They created a trend line
Uh-huh.
Based on historical data as to how much they would recommend and just their involvement in the community and what they've heard in terms of other agencies potentially requesting funds and not necessarily startups, established agencies that have been made aware about social services advisory board money and/or special alcohol funding.
So you did it based more on past data and not the politics or whim of the commission? And I wanna make sure that that is... And I want to make sure that that is something that we factor out. And, and the fact that a board who vets it and, you know, spends time. I have not heard the complaints about favoritism. I would hope that that isn't the case. But I, even if we depend on, you know, eventually, the community foundation, there are biases everywhere. And so the city is responsible for it. I mean, I can see Ron Fear running a flag up the pole saying, hooray, we're going to cut the budget by 500,000. I'll have 500 more thousand to work with because we won't be doing social services. So, you know, don't, don't say that out loud. But I do think that we have a kind of a moral, we have, we have done a good job here in this community of supporting those essential services, and I would hope that we continue to do that. And I don't, I think that was all.
Yeah, I just want to comment on that. I mean, some of what you say is correct. The budget for social services, based on this system, is going to be set by the commission, not the board. And that was the problem in the past.
And it wasn't a problem.
There were, yes, it was.
Didn't grow for 10 years.
Back in 2011, dedicate 10% of the general fund to it. Now, the other thing is the suggestion of .9 or .8 mils. If you do the math on that, it fits, as Finance Director said, right within the trend line. And it, it takes care of inflation. If, if you take, you know, like I think a mill was 630,000, you know, last year. If you take like .8 of that, that's over half a million dollars. You take .9, it's even more than that. And so the numbers are consistent. And so the idea here is to have consistent budgeting, focus on the priorities, because I'm with you 100%, you know, emergency shelter, crisis center, all those things that affect, you know, RCPD operations indirectly, they have to be supported. But the other problem also is, like, I can't see 40 agencies, you know. My guidance, and I've said this for the whole time I've been on the commission, we should limit it. The number of agencies should be limited. And I'm looking at about 20, you know, maximum, because otherwise, you take what limited funds we have, and they get diluted. And so I wanted to dispel any rumors. There's not any attempt here to, to not support social services. It's to support them with a priority list so the money goes to the right places so we get the biggest bang for the buck.
Can I add about the 30 to 40? That's just based on combining SSAB and Special Alcohol Fund applicants together. There are some agencies, about six, that have applied for both sets of money. So that's where the 30 applications come from. It's about a 13, 17 split, with six of them applying for both sets of funds. So 24 roughly, applicant, applications dual, and then six.
Yeah, that's what I figured. And then my, my numbers, I was talking about general fund, not special alcohol. I know that's an additional. So if you add all those up, it's over a million dollars a year. The city's investing in that. And I think that's supporting it quite nicely.
Yeah, and I don't think the combining of this was to reduce the number. I mean, the last budget, year over year, we gave social services a double-digit increase in funding. So we didn't take it down. We took it up about 10%. It was really to get some efficiencies, also to make it so they're, I want them to look at both sides of the equation, what they're giving social services versus alcohol funds and playing those, you know, looking at those together, even though the charter is somewhat different between the two. And yeah, I want to look at the community foundation, but that's not to reduce the number or say we're going to give less money. Hopefully, we'll be able to give more money if we do it, you know, correctly. So none of this, to me, is to cut the number.
It is if you reduce the mill from, to nine to eight, and that's what has been part of the discussion.
I'm not to reduce it. We can do about 450, 60,000 a year in social services funds. I'm not looking to cut that, but whatever percent that is of the mill, we can, as the mill goes up in value each year, the number will keep, you know, going up.
Well, at a previous discussion, I think we decided, not decided, but we came to a consensus on nine tenths of a mill. But as far as the social services, there's a lot of them that are also under the Greater Manhattan Community Foundation already. So it's not to say we're adding them on there. They're already there. The, the problem is, most of them are still running on a shoestring budget. So keeping up with inflation and staffing and the problems they have continue to grow because of the nature of their business and being a nonprofit. So they try to work with a variety of agencies to fund them. So it's not, they're already there in the Greater Manhattan Community Foundation, and we need to do our responsibility and our due diligence with the, with our community members and nonprofits.
All right, very good.
I move to adjourn. February 7th, 2023, City Commission meeting.
Second. It's been moved by Commissioner Butler, second by Commissioner Motta, to adjourn the meeting. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.